I think it's because the EPA is breathing down the neck.
There she is, now we can start.
But I really think the EPA has a big...
And I'm serious, we're gonna start.
It's a big part of that, so.
Right now.
Oh yeah, it's time, let's go.
Alright, call this meeting to order. Alright, our first order of business today is a public hearing. I suspect nobody's here to comment on our bond payoff and sales tax revenue.
We're gonna cheer for you, that's good news.
So we will let this go for five minutes. Maybe we need two more council chairs.
As I'm looking at this, that's the balance.
That's the balance, yeah.
That amount is the balance plus our normal payment, right?
Yes it is, we got a 68K payment coming up. And that 28 is the payoff per termination fee. Which we will make up in interest. About $350,000, pretty quick.
Okay.
So, just consider that 68,000, probably half of that is interest, I would imagine, on that.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, he'll be here by 6:05.
Yeah, he's got four minutes, guys. Give the man some time, won't you?
Is Britney on? Oh yeah, you dogged us. Everybody else was there.
Okay, but when they first announced it, wasn't it the week before, the meet the candidates? Or was I just like, I was like Disney, what are you guys?
No, I'm doing alright. Did we go a full hour on that, or more than an hour?
We started the last, right at 8 o'clock, so the last two minutes were about 10 after. Seth might not be here till 6:15.
Who?
Oh, that's okay. We can move things around.
Yeah, oh yeah.
We're in a work session.
We'll get three more minutes, I hope we're ready over here. You didn't, you didn't hear from Brittany on him?
I have not.
I thought it'd be maybe half some.
Yeah.
Part numbers to...
Well, there's our traffic study.
Our traffic study.
That we did when we did our speed limits.
Yeah.
For the hospital, please.
For the...
We don't have to do another traffic study.
I forgot, it's been so long since we did it.
Well, he said this on my, "We're not talking about speed limits again." I refuse to put that on YouTube.
We'll save that for January.
Whatever, he's gonna still be here. There were some of these on, I think I never heard about us, too.
That's why I had to print it out.
Alright, are you two young men here to provide public comment on our bond payoff?
That's what I did.
They're probably not interested.
No, this is...
We're here for an assignment.
Assignment, yes.
We know, we know.
So make it as interesting, like, just start telling stuff and I can write down something, get out as soon as possible.
Oh, now I'm gonna drag, now I'm gonna drag it out. Now I'm gonna drag.
Hey, these are my work, this is the instruction crew here, I'm gonna...
Yeah, we need to talk about... Talking about somebody keeps blocking that street.
By the way, we are in public hearing mode right now.
Okay, very good.
Stay that way till 6:05, and we're gonna close the public hearing.
We have been improving the city beautification quarter here. With the help of these two guys and a couple others.
Alright, it's 6:05. There was nobody, right, Royce?
Nope.
Nobody's gonna... Alright, we will go ahead and call the public hearing for the bond payoff and sales tax revenue bonds. Closed. Move on to our work session. So our first item of business, let's talk about that bond, till Seth gets here.
He's just walking in his office.
Seth did? Okay. Well, we can take up that, let Seth get settled, so. You see the bond payoff, right? Any discussion there?
No, I think we all felt like it was a good thing to do.
Okay, we'll take action tonight on this, then. That's okay. Alright, Seth, you want us to go on to the next one to get you settled in, or are you ready to go?
I know.
Okay, you're up.
You have two hours?
Yeah.
No, just two.
Three. For you?
Let's see, I think we're gonna postpone Seth.
You had at least, you had at least five.
I have five minutes. Two hour phone conversation. First of all, I want to tell you all thank you for your support of the fire department, the city. The way we've been going has really helped, even toward our ISO. The mayor asked me to come tonight and give you an ISO briefing about my two hour conversation with our ISO representative in Salt Lake. Couple of things, first off, right off the bat, we're in really good shape. The reason we have a 5, 5X rating right now, the 5X means we have a portion of our city that's not covered by fire hydrants. That's what that specifically is designed to suit. So if we want to get rid of that, we put fire hydrants down due to the city's limit, and we've got that fixed. The 5 part, we are six and three quarters points away from a 4, which is really fairly good, which is... But those six and three quarter points are gonna be hard fought.
The... Lower is better.
Lower is better.
No, that's like a 10% savings for everybody.
I didn't know if your "oo" was a "oo" or a "oo".
No, no. It's a good thing.
No, lower is definitely better. I talked to him about, and I also took some time to talk to Nelson on the insurance side of this. ISO is not going away, there's a rumor out there that it's not kind of being followed, but it is being followed. It's actually being done online and digitally, so that insurance agents can type in an address, and that address automatically references the ISO rating for that area, and it follows it. So it doesn't allow the insurance agents to cheat on residents that are outside of a fire district, or outside of a fire hydrant protection, or anything like that. So it's still being followed very strictly. The things that we talked about in this long conversation that would really do us good, and we would gain a lot of points by, is our water system. That's where we can get a lot of those six and three quarter points, is with upgrades of the water system, continuing to monitor. The biggest thing we could do, that a gentleman told me, was if we could show that we have flushed and pressure tested every hydrant within the rating period. Now, it doesn't mean every year.
Right.
But the entire system within between ratings, and we can show documentation, we've done every hydrant, that we actually gain, I think, four points in that whole water system area, because we've done that.
So Seth, how long is the rating period?
Five years.
So five years.
Yes. The last time was 15 years between ratings, but now they're really, they're getting where they've got pretty much all the cities down, and they're going, they're working to get five years between ratings. And if they have major changes, they'll come back sooner.
So how close do you think we are on that five year?
Well, right now, we're two and a half years into our, from our last rating. And I know, I know our C, public works guys have been testing hydrants, or actually making sure the water system and doing checks and stuff like that. But as far as testing is concerned, I've set it down, I've gotta give it to McKay to see what we can do to help. We've talked about that, about what we need to do to do that. Now, the next best thing to that is to be able to test every pressure zone. And make sure we test those pressure zones every five years, and we have every one of those tested. So that won't give us as many points, but it gives us more. Now, I know the issue with testing all the hydrants, fooling them all, pressure testing in the barrels, all that stuff, is a lot of water. And that's a lot of water that goes down the street, basically. And so, you know, we have to, I guess, kind of weigh that to see if we really want to do that. But the next best thing is to do zones. And so we might be able to pull a few hydrants out of each zone, and work that issue as well. And I've told McKay we can help that with the fire department, because I want to take the fire department guys out and test hydrants anyway, and do some of the testing that he needs to get done as part of our training. So it's not a problem to do that, we've just gotta, we've gotta work that schedule out. I don't want to go do things without him knowing about it, because it counts in both of those areas. It counts in the public works area, and in the fire department area, on what we do. So if we work together, we're able to gain maximum points for that. Now, let's talk apparatus for just a minute. The ISO guys realize that if we have another engine in the bay, that's great. But if we don't have the people to manage it, it doesn't count. So they really look at the personnel, and what's going on if we're able to actually manage those engines. Now, we can, we can count, we have to count a second engine on every fire call. That's how we're able to maintain our fire, because we've been able to do that. We have automatic aid in place, and mutual aid in place for Willand Hills, Salem, and Payson, when we have a structure fire, and every wildfire we have. We also have Payson and Willand Hills automatically dispatched. So we can justify the second engine. Now, there's been talk about, do we need a ladder? The answer is, eh, probably not. The reason being is, we don't have any structures in the city that are over 32 feet at the eave. Now, we might have to look at that once we get a school, if you get a school gymnasium, they might be a little taller. But the mitigating factor is, and again, I commend you all for keeping our fire sprinkler in place, that mitigates a lot of that, if you sprinkle the building. So that takes care of a lot of those issues, by having those automatic sprinklers inside and installed, where we can mitigate some of those other factors. Now, we can gain a few more points on apparatus by having a few more pieces of equipment added to the current trucks. We can also work to get equipment that would be on a ladder truck, and have that on a second responding vehicle, we get credit for that. And that might be a little cheaper way to get us a few more points on the apparatus side. But for us to actually need to go out and buy another engine right now, we need to mitigate that through mutual and automatic aid. And we're okay to do that, as far as sprinkler systems are doing that. Now, the ISO system and the grading system looks at structures that are gonna require 2,500 GPM or more, are gonna look for a third engine. But sprinklers again mitigate that. What's that?
gallons per minute?
Yep.
That's what we're talking about.
And that is factored into the international fire code, based upon size of building, all of those other factors, but we don't have any.
So if a building needs 25 or more gallons per minute?
2,500 gallons per minute. But if sprinklers are installed, that also mitigates that. I ask about a new church, he says if it's sprinkled, it doesn't count. I ask about a school, he says if it's sprinkled, it probably doesn't count, the only thing it happens is the height. Then you might have to mitigate a ladder truck, automatic aid, which Payson has a ladder truck.
And Salem's getting one.
And Salem's getting one, it's about time, they need one for a while.
That's why they're getting a new fire station.
Okay.
So that's a place to park it.
Good for them. So we have ladders within five, and the whole thing about this is, those engines and ladders have to be within five miles of our city amendment, and they both are.
Yeah.
So that works out well, we just need to make sure we have mutual aid agreements and automatic aid. Is that the critical thing, to have automatic aid agreements set up with these other departments around? And then we all share the cost through, you know, through, we go help them, they help us, if that's how it works. The only time they start looking for a ladder is if, or actually for, yeah, a ladder, is when you get up into buildings that require 3,500 GPM per minute, which those are, those are big buildings. And we're not ever gonna be that big.
Right.
Unless we're gonna build a skyscraper and open it north into the city, I don't know if that's gonna happen.
35 is our maximum height.
The warehouses probably not gonna be more than 32 feet at the eaves, I think we're probably gonna be okay.
And they can be more than 35.
Yeah.
There you go. So it's, anyway, that's kind of where we're at, that's the nuggets of that conversation.
Oh, good.
Water system is a big one, we can get a few more points for apparatus. But right now, we're really on a good track, and he reviewed my, our entire apparatus rating with me over the phone, and gave me all these points that we could do, that helped get some of those, maximize those points in those areas.
How many, how many levels are there, Seth?
There's 10, well, there's, actually, there's nine.
Nine, so actually nine being the worst.
Nine is the worst, and that's, the 5X actually is a little bit like a quarter percent, or 25% better than a nine. So that 5X is kind of, we have an area within the city that is a nine, or a little bit less than that. Everything else is a five, and that's because of the fire hydrants. Because we don't have enough, we don't have enough support there to do. When we do, we mentor, or we mediate that with our tender truck and other apparatus company. So we have availability of water, just not fire hydrants.
Do they, does the redundancy of the well and stuff, or storage?
Well, that helps toward the public works piece, and toward the overall water system, but it's...
A lot of us, the maintenance and the...
Exactly. Which we're already doing, that is, so we're...
Up to, then you've got firefighting and capability throughout the city.
That's correct, that's correct. The other thing that they complimented us on, and he said we could gain a little bit more points through, is our education system. Now, when we were talking about the interface code that we're just, that we're working on, everybody's, that we've all been working on, the interface code, we talked about education for the buildings in our city that are older, that don't have fire sprinklers. And if we can show we provided education about, you know...
Defensible space and those kinds of things?
Exactly, exactly, you know, defensible space, you know, cutting trees back, fire alarms, CO alarms, all of those kinds of things that we're providing education in those areas, we gain maximum points for that as well. So we can gain a few more points there, just with...
Is that just a matter of making sure that you have that education and documenting it?
Correct.
So if we wouldn't qualify, because we had talked about previously with the LOEWE code, about putting in something every month in the newsletter, like a tip, every month of something that you could do around your home to make it more defensible?
That's correct.
Publish a pamphlet.
That kind of stuff for the interface area, it does count.
And that feeds back into the grant piece with the state, where we have to show we're doing something.
Right, and that puts us in two areas, really, yeah, absolutely.
If we get a citywide purchase, to make sure, yeah, everybody with fireworks neighborships in their homes, is that...
Yeah, I mean, that definitely provides opportunities for people to purchase fire sprinklers, or fire extinguishers, you know, at a reduced rate, or we buy bulk or something, and we get them for a reduced rate. That would go a lot of ways for stuff like that, so yeah. Just those little things, we gain a few points here, a few points there. The next thing you know, we're six and three quarters points up from where we were last rating, and we're a little bit better than...
What, just a real quick summary on what an ISO rating change would result in?
Well, if we go from a five to a four, you're gonna be, it's a little more than 10% reduction on everybody's homeowner's insurance. I mean, that's...
That's huge.
That's huge, I mean, I look at, yeah, what do we have to spend? You know, you talk about the apparatus and some of these, I think there's an opportunity, costs that we had there, where maybe for a little bit of money that we would allocate for that, we could put more money back in the residents' pockets.
Correct.
Just by maximizing...
And is it the same the other way, if we had an increase of 10% if we drop to six?
I'm not sure about that.
Well, six is a little bit more, you're probably closer to about 15%.
So it would go up? Yeah, okay.
I mean, what money that's being spent?
Not only, not only in, you know, safety itself, but...
Right, no, it gets, it gets back to the presentation I did a couple of years ago, where if we, if we were a nine across the city, and everybody's paying $2,000 a year for property, or for insurance, and then you all of a sudden go to five, and everybody drops a thousand, you take all those residents, and all that money that would have been spent, it's like 1.2 million.
Right.
And right now, we're only putting 102, 120,000 dollars in the fire department, so we're only spending a tenth of the money, and we're reducing the overall cost for all the residents in the city by 1.2 million. So I, you know, that's...
It's a good return on investment.
Yeah, return on taxes.
That's a lot of money to me.
It is, I mean, everybody's gonna feel it, $1,000, but you put all that together, that is a pretty good chunk of change.
Yeah, it is.
Well, and that's why I had these questions regarding the fire department, because, I mean, these are real changes that affect every resident.
Yes.
Not in taxes, but in, you know, their property insurance. And that's why I had those concerns before bringing in more big buildings.
Yeah, no, I remember when we did our ISO rating from nine to five, you know, what, 17, 18 years ago, everybody's saying, "I'm gonna, my insurance dropped by 50% that first year." I mean, that was 25, 25 years ago, but that was still, it was a pretty good chunk. But yeah, for, if we, yeah, if we were to abandon, that would not be good. That would really go bad.
Alright.
Propose we stay right where we're at, and just keep moving ahead.
Keep moving ahead.
Medical costs.
Great, and just to, just to think about what we want to do in budget year next year for fire, for apparatus, right?
It is gonna, for us to, for us to work to put these things into, it is going to require a budget increase.
Yeah.
Where we need to put, we need to look at the equipment, and where we can get the biggest bang for our buck. And look at, and we might even need to get even some smaller, some, you know, replacement smaller vehicles to carry additional equipment, that might be a good investment. I know Nelson and I have talked about other vehicles that might be available, I don't know. It could be something that we could really gain a lot of, a lot of points from, or a lot of traction with, with a few, just, you know, maybe $1,000.
Okay.
And already worth it.
Okay, well, I bring it up, because you know when budget season starts, right?
Yep, I'm already working on it.
It's already started.
It's starting to start, although it may be somebody else's problem.
Any, any other questions in the meeting?
No, we're good, I'm good.
Okay, I just got, I hate to late, but I got this other obligation, I gotta take care of some...
A good animal for all the work you do as I...
Oh, the number being EMS calls.
Yeah.
Well, we have that one sheet, I don't know if anybody's really...
Well, I looked at it, but I wasn't sure if he compiled the data.
Where'd we get the data from? Deputy Rowe did this, right?
Our system.
Your system.
Thank you.
Okay. So that's a three, three years, two year span.
If you want longer, that can go as well.
Okay, so I don't know.
Well, we'll have that discussion. So is this, these numbers on here, Sherry, are they, is that all of the calls total?
Yeah, for two years, yes.
For two years?
For EMS.
For EMS, so...
For, yes, so, nothing fire related, but EMS, just little medical accidents.
No dogs?
No dogs. And the second sheet kind of gives you a breakdown of what the calls were, so, in order from my...
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions for Seth? Let him skedaddle? Alright, that takes care of Seth, that takes care of the bond, we've got the hospital memory care facility conditional use discussion, so. We're there.
Yeah.
So, so you'll notice that there's three and a five, so we separated the conditional use discussion from the commercial development discussion, if that makes sense?
Right.
Because the commercial's larger, and has, you know, fits in, there's no conditional use on there, so that's all. Any comments, any discussion you want to have?
On that.
We will take action tonight on this, or I'd like to. I'll tell you guys.
Just where I stand, I'm gonna know on the conditional use.
You're what?
I'm a no on the conditional use.
No, why?
Um, I think medical, I think we have a problem with, you know, taking care of that many more, getting the medical to that facility, you know, and not only because of the call volume, right? But I look at, okay, how often do our EMS people have to go out, right? And if our call volume to the assisted living center, right, we're basically adding three times the amount we currently have, is what they're asking for in this facility. But if the amount of calls go four times what they are, or three times what they are to the current center, I'm concerned that our volunteers may say, you know what, like, we used to get called out every once in a while, and now we're getting called out every single time, and it's draining, right? And so, then, we're gonna have to start paying our EMS people, and then it's not gonna be voluntary. So I'm worried about not only the medical concern of covering that facility, but then the cost to the city, not only because we pay for the calls that come in already, and that's a burden to every taxpayer, because they pay for it, but I'm worried that if our EMS people start getting burned out, because they're going on calls every time they're on call, and not every once in a while, that then we're gonna start paying them, and that's another added expense. And I'm also concerned about whether that's even a viable facility based upon the research.
That's, I would have some of that.
And keeping both of those facilities filled, so they're not sitting vacant, I think is...
After the discussion there with Chris, the problem with filling him, his facility with, I don't know, concrete or whatever he has there, that, that would give me some concern about the viability of the other side.
Well, I think viability, maybe the elephant in the room, but it's not really anything we can use...
I'm justifying it.
I'm not sure that you can deny it based on their business decisions.
No, I mean, if they, if they want to, what they want to do with their money, and if somebody wants to loan them, you know what? I mean, that's our call. However, the call that I think we have to make, going back again to the EMS side of this equation, there is a real cost that is incurred by the residents to provide the services for that facility, so that they can make money. And it's being borne by those who live in the city, more so in a disproportionate manner than by him, because of what we pay for the taxes versus what he would pay. And, and going back to piggyback on, you know, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna make it a little more personal here. Brittany's talking about EMS calls, and old mom, and, you know, that type of thing. And my wife's been an EMT now for...
16 years.
A long time, and I, and I can tell you, there have been a lot of times before I joined the department, when the pager would go off, my wife would leave, and the kids are like, "When is mom gonna quit this? This sucks." Because mom has to leave, she can't be here for this, and she can't be there for that. And I know people that have left the department, because they can't balance their personal life, their volunteer life, and their professional full-time job, and make it work. And if we burn people out, then, you know, that, it affects our ability to have a good, strong department as well. Now, I, and that's, I mean, it's a very real thing, I hadn't even thought of that aspect until Brittany brought it up, because I've just been trying to channel in and just look at, where are the facts? What are the things that we can and can't issue a conditional use permit for? And trying to take all the emotion and some of this other stuff out of the equation completely. I...
Did you have this discussion when approved the current facility? The impact on EMT?
I wasn't here.
I wasn't here.
Anybody here?
I was actually at the fire department training, giving my fire certifications the night that they had that discussion, so...
Anyways, but that's my concern, that we will burn out our volunteers, and nobody will want to volunteer. And then when we have no volunteers, what do we do? We have to pay them.
And that's an even bigger drain.
And then it's an even bigger drain on the city budget to provide services to the people at the assisted living centers. And it's, all the residents are bearing that cost, and I don't think we should put, as a city council, should put that burden on our residents.
What you're talking about, going from a volunteer department to a staff?
We can afford that. We can't even afford some for the volunteer one.
But Ty, that mayor, that's my issue, is right?
No, I, I'm just like, try to clarify that, that's what you're really saying.
Yes, because if these people are going out on calls constantly, and getting called away from their other stuff, right? It, this volunteer work that was every once in a while, becomes a bigger burden. And then people don't want to volunteer, and if we don't have volunteers, then we have to pay them. And I think that is what's gonna happen, I could see that happening with the increase in calls. I mean, we can't even get, we're struggling right now to get enough people for our fire department. We're still looking for more people, we still need more people for the fire department. And we have tons of people moving in, but people don't want to volunteer. So, I mean, so if we look at the EMS aspect, I'm very concerned about that.
To me, that's a, that's a valid argument. Like, last time when there's, we were talking about viability, and I'm like, I don't think we have...
We got up into the weeds last time.
I didn't think we had any right saying whether or not, you can do whatever you want with your own money, but if it's gonna be a burden on the city, that to me is something I can stand behind, because I don't think that's right.
And there's nothing in place for, like, those facilities to, to reimburse, or to share, or to...
And not at this point in time, I mean, eventually, when we get enough EMTs, and we're running our own ambulance, there... And not at this point in time. I mean, eventually, when we get enough EMTs and we're running our own ambulance, there can be some revenue that can be recaptured at that point in time. But even then, we're not talking about full-time people, we're still talking about volunteers. There's benefit to the city and the fire department budget-wise, but I don't know that that's gonna mean, you know, okay, we're transporting now, when they go out on call, we're gonna pay them more than what we're paying them now. I mean, I suspect, no, most of the people on the department, they're not gonna say, well, hey, we're transporting, I want a raise, because they're not that way. They're not that kind of, you know, they're doing it because they enjoy serving others. But there's that balance of serving versus now it's a burden.
Right.
So.
Well, I think this kind of strikes to your memo on this. It really kind of boils down to emergency services kind of discussion.
I, and, and just, just to put it on the record, I guess, since Seth is sitting here, how many, how many EMTs and medically-trained volunteers do you need to have to be able to, for the city to be able to run their ambulance service? And then we have the, we have the ambulance proof. We, we can't use it because we're, we don't have the people, if I understand correctly.
That's correct.
To, to run an ambulance, I have to have two EMTs on every call. In order to do two EMTs on every call, I have to have two EMTs 24/7, 365. And I have to be able to show the state for justification, for application for the license to actually transport, that we can maintain that. And right now, we're still, we're still struggling every month with openings, with the, I think we've got fourteen EMTs right now. And we, we still struggle with openings because not everybody can cover all the shifts all the time. Uh, we've got several people going into school still. We're hoping to go cover some more of that, but it, it's still, it's just time and, and volunteers. I mean, Brittany's right, we, we need the people to do it. If we can have an ambulance parked in the shed, but nobody's driving, doesn't seem good.
But that's what I'm saying.
So I don't feel like we're close.
We hardly can even cover all our shifts that we have.
That's correct.
We're close, but we're not really getting much closer.
Well, we're, we're closer than we used to be.
Right. Yeah, we, we are closer, but right now, I think during the day, we only have a couple of people on the department that can even take the daytime shifts. And when you're on call, that means.
If you're on call, you're, you're here.
They're here.
You're within the city limits.
So, okay, any other discussion on this? We'll, we'll pick it up in our, in our regular meeting.
Mayor, does this open for public discussion, this section?
Uh, not, not typically. Are you here to speak for Lee, or?
No, I'm here to speak for the residents on the adjoining street from this project property. And I will wait till the proper time or section of meeting.
No, we're gonna move on.
Okay.
Let's talk about the church plenary plat discussion. So this one, we'll take action on too today, today. The ones we do action on.
Okay, the geotechnical evaluation wasn't changed at all, right? We got that report, but it hadn't been changed as far as I could tell from the last report.
Correct.
Okay.
Changes on that. So, so what you, what you received, uh, is, uh, basically after some discussion with the landowners on the south side there, and the landowners' desire to have a chain-linked fence across there, looking at the grading and how that would work, I guess they've realized that they need a little additional land there so that they don't have to have a retaining wall of the full height from the chain-linked fence all the way down to the parking, so they can have a landscape buffer in between there.
And that was the only change, right?
So that's, exactly, that's.
Acquiring additional property and then that fence line.
Exactly.
So, and. That covers my questions on the fire and issues.
They addressed, they addressed most all the concerns, I think, yeah.
They, they did all of them, didn't they?
Yeah.
Didn't they?
Yeah. Yeah, I think they addressed.
They addressed all the issues from the residents regarding, the residents around the facility, they addressed all the residents' issues. Um, so all the residents basically would be happy with the facility. And then my concern was the fire, and Seth addressed that, so.
Was that really a cross-section view of the grade change that they're gonna have to do?
It's condemned.
Is that?
It's condemned.
It's condemned, so it's not really that switched. Okay, I'm going. You remember EMS team when I went out outside.
One second.
I'm going, okay. Okay. Yeah, I'm looking at the contour lines up above, and that paints a completely different picture than this below.
Yeah, that's true. Do we have any issue with fire sprinklers in this facility?
It's gonna be.
I mean, we're, that's standard.
Yes.
How do we require about, I think it's fifteen hundred gallons per minute?
We'd like fifteen hundred gallons per minute, sixty PSI.
I think you provide that.
We have that down there, yeah. We can, we can do some tests if you want some, some floor tests. Maybe we can work that out, but yeah.
Well, they're down on the, you're more towards the northern end of town, so your pressure should probably be higher, because you're down.
And you get it, yeah.
Pressure on the.
You probably have a lot more than that, we'll have to reduce it, so you don't.
Well, if you find our project impacts that and requires some input from us and monetary input, you let us know. Would you want to, you want to mitigate any problems or any issues that you're causing?
Well, I think, I think monetary is probably less, but like my comments last time, you know people?
Nelson's not putting pressure on.
You're looking at volunteers?
Yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt. Sometimes people won't take action until somebody stands at a pulpit and says, you need to do it.
Okay, anybody have any additional concerns? Are we gonna be okay to get this into the meeting?
I think this needs to, this can move forward.
Okay. Great, fantastic, we'll do that. Alright, we can talk about the Haskell Plaza commercial discussion now. Oh, you got a slide show for us?
Well, I, I'll just put up this slide. If it's going to show up.
Lots of pages. Alright, I think I have the bottom of it. Alright. No?
No reason it does not want to talk to us, but.
Okay.
Do you think you might have any questions for me during this?
No.
Okay, cause I do.
Yeah, I mean, you've, you've gone over whether or not the apparatus can get in and out.
We've been through, yeah, we've been through that already on Capitol. Alright.
Okay, great. That was something the planning commission wanted.
Alright, I guess we'll just do it the old-fashioned way, huh?
So, if you don't mind, I, I wanted to point out, oh, there it goes. For some reason, the, the lamp just.
Oh, that's pointed way down, too, and.
Due to budget costs, we can't afford to.
Let's see if it'll.
It's a little better. You guys over there see that okay? Alright.
Questions? No, that's alright. So back in, back in March, uh, Lee brought for the city council a, a different configuration for the commercial site, uh, asking for some exceptions. He had previously been before the planning commission, the planning commission had approved and had the recommendation for the council to approve it with those exceptions that Lee was asking for. A couple of those exceptions came out of the planning commission meeting. Others that previous, uh, Lee previously, uh, had looked at. And, uh, so at the end of that meeting in March, uh, the council approved the exceptions, and basically the council was looking for a package that reflected all the exceptions to come forward for approval. Uh, so then, several months later, middle of August, we receive a, a package of drawings, and those drawings, this is, this is the site plan that was in those drawings. I, I want to point out that the, the density and the use did not change with the layout. It, it was just merely a configuration issue, and I think that, uh, in the previous plan, the buildings, uh, along Elk Ridge Drive were parallel with Elk Ridge Drive. And I think, uh, the engineer probably pointed out to them that, wait a second, you're gonna have ten to twenty feet of drop across the length of the building, which is going to be really hard with ADA, you're gonna have to have some stairs and ramps, and this is gonna change things significantly. And so, they came back with this concept of basically placing these buildings so that they match the contours a little better. One of the benefits from that is that the residential units that are on top are accessed from the back of the building, which is the high side of the property. And so, so while the storefronts would come out on the low side, at, at whatever ground level is for each one of those, the, the backside, you gain, you know, in some cases, probably close to ten feet or at least six or eight feet. So there aren't as many stairs to get into those, uh, second-story residential units as you would have had based on the other design. And so that's, that's probably somewhat of a benefit from an aesthetic point of view. From the, if you're south of there and looking down, those structures are partially in the ground on the backside, so they don't look as, as tall and as imposing. Obviously, on the front side, they're, they still look like a two-story structure. Uh, he's up against the same limitations that homes are though, that he can't be any taller than thirty-five feet. So, they're not going to be any taller than any of the other, any of the homes that we're seeing built, especially in the, the new areas to the north. So, anyway, because the, because the configuration had changed, we needed to bring it back to planning commission and city council and also verify that, that, you know, comparing apples to apples, that we're really dealing with similar number of units, similar, uh, that we have the parking and everything that we need. And that, that doesn't really change any, uh, any infrastructure needs, utilities, that type of thing. And so we took it to, uh, planning commission with a, a new public hearing, and of course, the room was full as it was the, the first public hearing that we had with the, with the neighbors. The, the meeting was civil. Uh, the neighbors brought up a lot of good points. I would say emotions were high at the meeting. Uh, you know, the, the neighbors, say overarching, the neighbors would prefer not to see commercial there, but coming into this meeting, they also realized, recognized that that's been so on commercial for as long as Lee's owned the property, which is over twenty years, and so he probably has a right to develop that property as commercial property. Uh, so what I, what I did in this, uh, long memo, I did cut it down from nine pages to five, so. Tried to consolidate it a little bit for you, but I tried to spell out, first of all, some of the concerns that the neighbors mentioned, and, and then with some, with some comments, I, also, one thing that I appreciated was with some of the neighbors' concerns, they also brought forward some solutions. One of the, one of the items that was mentioned, they're on Goose Nest Drive, as you, as you look at that drawing, you can see we've got parking that's facing Goose Nest Drive. Uh, kind of similar situation to what, uh, was brought up with the church and, and concern of people driving, using those parking stalls at night, the lights are gonna be shining in the houses. So, one possible solution there might be a four-foot-high wall or fence across the back of the parking stalls that would block that. Another, another possible solution, uh, which I think was also, was also mentioned, was, uh, those, what if those parking stalls were eliminated? Now, as part of the exceptions, there's an exception to go from, uh,
Five.
Five foot, five to four. Okay, so I'm, I'm, I'm telling you that right up front, there are, I think, I believe about six stalls, parking stalls more than are required and the way this is laid out right now.
Well, not required, under the exception, there's actually five stalls required for the amount of building space he has. And based upon the amount of building space he has, there's not enough room for five stalls. So the city council made the exception, because I didn't agree with it down to four stalls. So I just want to make sure that we're clear on that.
Yep.
Right? So the amount of building space he has requires five stalls for the building space. But we didn't, as a council, want to reduce his building space so he can fit in the five stalls, which I disagree with.
Okay.
Okay, so we're already down, just somewhere we're at.
Yep.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
So, no, that's fine, so appreciate that. So, another, another possibility, uh, would possibly be removing those, those parking stalls, basically, uh, having just, uh, side-facing stalls, so you gain a few of them back. You'd, you'd gain maybe a quarter of them back across there, and then you'd have an extra ten feet that could be used as landscape buffer to put additional trees in that end. So, I, just to, just throwing out other options there. And, uh, then some of the other solutions, uh, the, the residents are obviously concerned about traffic, would like to see the entrances removed from the residential streets and just two, two entrances onto Elk Ridge Drive. But that makes things really hard for emergency equipment, especially on this site. Uh, the, just the shape of the site and, and then grades, trying to get emergency putting around. Plus, we basically, uh, have a statement in our code that requires us to put accesses onto as many streets as we can, just to spread the traffic out.
Shay, speaking of that, I know there's access on Olympic, Elk Ridge, Goose Nest. I couldn't tell if there's access coming from Star.
So on Star Lane, there, there is an access there, if, if that goes to a, uh, assisted living center, then there's a, there's a, come back up here a second, there's an access. An access right down close to the intersection.
There is.
Go to sheet five.
Okay, gotcha, so it's right by the intersection.
Sheet five calls it up pretty good.
Other, other comments with traffic, and, and this is a comment that we get with every public hearing when it comes to development, we've got it with the church, with, with every public hearing we have, people bring up the issue of people speeding in town and excessive speed. City council's tried to do something about that. We've got full-time officer now and, and some additional, uh, time available. So, so that's, that's covered there. So, anyway, those are, those are just a smattering of the different comments and, uh, concerns and solutions, the, uh, that the residents had. I, I guess I will point out one other one, and that was that, uh, that some of the residents on Goose Nest would like to see the residential go away up on top. But there again, it's in our code that we've said that that is, that that's something we want. And, you know, it, it helps to kind of tone down the commercial by having the residential on top, uh, at least designed for the buildings with the balconies in the, in front over the top of the commercial. The, the, uh, commercial window. The commercial window system or storefront system that's down on the bottom there, at least in the drawings, looks really understated. The buildings, yeah, they look large, but they look more residential than commercial in what it has shown.
Well, plus you get different market segments, so that you can potentially buffer, right, one segment with another occupancy, so.
How's our commercial code redraft coming?
I believe that it was put to a halt for, to get through the general plan update and try to deal with that. And looking at what, basically, this application was already in. We only have one other site in the city, which is across the street. It's Brown's property that's zoned commercially. The planning commission was told that the city doesn't want any additional commercial property. And so.
Both of the house there.
Yeah. If this is constructed, and I'm making an assumption here because I'm just going off of what was directed to planning commission, that basically, if this is constructed, there's no need to spend all the time on commercial code because we don't have any additional commercial property that's really viable.
The only thing that would change that would be the annexation of that little bit of property down very northern, but.
If it was commercial, then? Because we don't even know.
No, no.
The calls that the city has received.
That's the only thing that can change that, really. Otherwise, we'll be billed out on commercial.
The calls the city's received on that have basically gone back to the statements the council made when the people came forward with the higher-density development, saying, no, we want to keep that with animal rights and the larger lots. And so, that's the direction that, as people have called on that, that we've given them.
Well, we may want to rethink that.
For another day.
You're moving down there.
Another day. Hey, it was on commercial.
It was.
It was.
So, do you have any other questions about this?
So, with these buildings, they're being twisted. I know, but I mean, with those buildings twisted, when we talked about this before, we were talking about garages and other things, and now you're going to have 10 feet in elevation change? How are they going to get their cars in the garage if the elevation's up here and the garage is down here? I'm having a hard time conceptualizing this one.
Well, the garages are in the parking area, just as they were before.
They're just freestanding, so they're not actually parking in any of the.
Some of them did have actual garages.
Yes, they are actual garages, but they're at the parking area level. They're freestanding from the building, just as they were before.
Because when I look at the elevations on this, and that change, I mean, the parking behind, they're literally parking at what is the equivalent of a second story on the backside. I mean, like my house, I pull in at ground level, but I go around back, and I got a walkout basement. And that's effectively what we're doing or what he's proposing here. And that changes things quite a bit with regards to the conditional use and what we were approving. I mean, you know, you've got a bunch of the parking pushed down to Goose Nest. I mean, yes, you've got the number of stalls, but the way that I feel about this, each and every one of these, there's four different parcels, they need to be able to come forward on their own merits in that one parcel and not be able to count stalls in number, one of the bigger piece, have those stalls count towards one of the smaller parcels, because I think that they're being sectioned up so that they can be sold off individually. Well, last thing I want to have happen is the building on the larger one, they come in and they do like the Segway store over in Spanish Fork and says, no parking here unless you're going to the Segway store. I mean, because legally, they can do that because that's their property. I think they each need to be able to stand upon their own merits based on what we conditionally approved, and if they can't, then they can't.
Well, and I think we're, I think we're all agreed with that, and that's.
I mean, that's why it is concerned.
If he brings each building forward, he is going to have to meet.
Because of the parking requirements.
Meet for it.
But what Nelson's saying is, based upon this drawing, it doesn't meet the parking requirements for each building.
Individually, it couldn't, because you've got down on that.
Or does it? The parking for the storefront per building isn't represented next to the building, or is it somewhere else on the property?
Because when I. No, I agree with your statement that you've got parking out along Elbridge Drive.
Yeah.
Perpendicular to Elbridge Drive, you have parking on Goose Nest that's across from the building. The number of stalls that are directly up against the building, you're correct, do not meet the total number of stalls that they need, but that's a physical impossibility. They have to have, there has to be additional stalls.
We gave him an exception on the number of stalls, and if he can't meet that exception, no bueno.
Well, and my point is, as each phase comes through, we're going to require him to provide the number of stalls that he has to have for each one of those.
You know, we gave him the exception so that we wouldn't be stuck with buildings right against the edge of the road. That was where we gave, there was a little bit of give and take so we could get that. That being said, that's all the further I was willing to go with this. And they do, they're going to need to come forward. If you've got a building that needs X number of stalls and you can't make them fit in there, based on the size of the building, he's going to have to make the building smaller to get the stalls in so that each one of these can be sold off individually and always be compliant with what our code is. And if it can't happen.
And thank you, Nelson. I appreciate that. That was, you know, one of my key issues from the beginning. And we already reduced it, so to go, you know, and these are, these are all going to be individually owned, they're going to end up freestanding. We don't want to worry about, you know what I mean? Property issues. Well, our parking's clear down on the other side past the other building.
Yeah.
On Elbridge Drive.
I mean, I.
Right? Because the issue is, these are going to be sold, and it goes from one owner to another owner to another owner, and you're going to have some issues, and then it's going to be back on the city. And that's what I.
And I experienced this firsthand last week over in Spanish Fork. I went to a big homeowners association to go visit a client, and I pulled in, and I was going to park on the street. I got looking, and there's signs all over, no parking on the street. Okay. So, then I'm driving around looking for a place for parking. Well, on the far, I mean, you know, it was, I was in Spanish Fork. It was practically like I was parking over in Springville at the guest parking stall because that's where the stalls were assigned for that. And it's like, no. I mean, the stalls for the facilities need to be in those parcels so that if that property owner wants to go up and say, parking only for company XYZ, he's fully within his rights so that we don't have a shift of some of these things. And I, because I just, the more I think about this, it's like, especially when it comes to the residential side of this, if you get somebody that moves in and they've got two parking stalls, but they've got four vehicles, and there's some extra space down here, there might be some vehicles that are going to show up down there, and it becomes an enforcement nightmare for the property owners. And then, who are they going to call? They're going to call the city, and then the city's going to call Sherry, and then Sherry's going to go deal with it with an issue potentially. If we can avoid these issues, let's just avoid them.
Did the residents around this express concern about people parking on the side of their streets all the time?
Well, there really isn't parking on Goose Nest now. It's too narrow.
I didn't.
It's too narrow for additional parking there anyway, so.
People do it anyways. Even though it's narrow, people park there unless there's no parking lanes.
There is a sign, there's no parking, and there's a car parked in front of it all the time.
Every time.
And you take these stalls, the majority of these stalls in that larger parcel, they're all aiming right across into people's front rooms, bedrooms, houses. I don't think any amount of massaging of this is going to change the fact that all those stalls front and face that, unless you take and you move those buildings out so that the only way the headlights can aim is towards the buildings on those parcels, and then you bring them around and you put them in between.
People get by curtains.
Or you put in.
It is a weird, sort of an interesting situation because.
Or you put in a fence, which I think, I think a fence would be much.
You don't have enough parking stalls without going to a different parcel of property.
Yeah.
Because. The way he's got it, divided it up. That's an issue.
That's.
That's an issue. I mean, I don't care, if this was all one piece of property and had to be all sold and the parking lot was 50 miles away, who cares? It's just property. But when, but when you have the potential of selling these off and it's like, oh, yeah, your parking stalls on this other guy's property, that's a problem.
So, Phoebe, I'm just looking at it, trying to figure out, okay, what are solutions here? If he comes back and says, look, we're basically doing this zero-lot line. So, if he sells something, he's not selling the large rectangular property, he's selling the building. And so, the rest of the property is in an association, which is very typical of commercial properties.
Right.
That you go in and you buy, you know, and I don't know if he's leasing the units or if he's selling the units, but this still goes back to the phases.
Right, so like phase one. It'd need to be all encompassed within the property.
We're going to require him to have the number of stalls that he's supposed to have with each phase, but you're not talking about a rectangle anymore. You're just talking about, zero-lot line is literally just the building.
The building.
Sure. I, I'm not saying I don't get that, but if he comes in and he builds one building and the economy tanks again, and then we're left with what's left behind, I want it to be something that can stand on its own merits, period, so that there is enough parking space and some of these things. I mean, I don't want to have us in a position that we're dealing with things like Woodland Hills is with the developer because of things going south, and now the city's left holding back. I don't want to go there.
Well, and that's why I'm asking, too, that the phasing on this, that they start at the north with the first commercial building, because if it does tank at that point and that one doesn't fill up, then at least the rest of this property up above can be rezoned residential.
Shay, on that, I thought about that, and I thought I would probably want the south one to be done first, the one right next to the assisted living center. Because otherwise, you've got one block, and you're going to be diagonal, commercial, assisted living, and then you're going to put houses on the opposite corners. I mean, I just think if you had commercial right next to the assisted living, right, and then if something happens, you have everything else that you can do something with. I don't know, I just think it's a better layout, right, as far as phases go, than you'd want that one done first next to the assisted living? Or the one on Star and Goose Nest, right?
Yeah.
But I guess.
No, I see what you're, I see what you're saying.
Just so they're grouped together.
My concerns with it came when I started looking at storm drainage. All water runs downhill, and it's going to end up in the facilities down at the bottom of the project. If you develop the top one first, we're going to have to somehow handle additional storm drainage.
Well, we did that with Dean. I mean, he had temporary retention funds over here in the senior housing. We got him temporary retention fund because they're doing the interfaces.
And that's why I think we would need to require then.
It may be easier for him, but what's easier for him versus what works financially?
What?
Doesn't matter to me. It's just doing it right and just having it's own merits.
All right, let's conclude this. Time to get into our public meeting, or into our work, our regular council meeting. Obviously, there's lots of discussing yet to be had.
No action.
And I think Shay, you gave me something to mull over. Get the concerns, and we'll be probably going around on this a little bit, so. We're going to. All right, we're going to go ahead and begin.
I think they need to know if they want to make a comment or sign up.
Oh, yeah, make sure if you go on, if you're here to make any public comments, you sign up on the sheet back there, Royce, I'll show you where that is.
It'll be given time if you have.
We'll continue work session after our regular council meeting. All right, let's go ahead and begin tonight.
I said on the. Oh, yeah, no, we'll take that. But you'll meet first on our, after the post meeting, so you don't have to sit here till work.
We enjoy these meetings.
All right. We're going to get started. We're going to begin with invocation, Dale Bigler offered to do that, and then if we can get, anybody want to volunteer to lead us in the pledge? Happy to do that. Wonderful, appreciate that.
Father heaven, we are thankful as we meet here tonight as a city council to discuss and make decisions on various aspects of continuing development. We pray that we might be wise in the decisions that we make and that we will be in tune with, we will be just in those decisions. Pray that we'll be gutted and directed in making those decisions our best for all of our, all of our town and citizens. We're grateful for this opportunity to serve and grateful for the opportunity to serve together as a city council. We pray that the rest of this evening will go as planned and that we will all look for being helpful and being, having a good camaraderie and friendliness in our city.
In the name of Jesus Christ.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. How about a motion to adjust the timeframe to begin at 7:04 PM?
So stated.
I'll section that.
Own favor?
Aye.
Be opposed? Great, let's go ahead and do roll call. Dale Bigler.
Brittney Thompson.
Nelson Abbott.
Kai Ellis.
Tricia Thomas.
Paul Prok.
Great, fantastic. All right, Royce, if you'll announce our, those that would like to speak public forum, let me remind everybody that if you want to speak in public forum, please make your comments in the form of a statement, and keep them to about two minutes. And if somebody's already stated something, then no reason to repeat it, just say, get them. So, all right, Royce.
Jenny Elder, do you have any?
Just better property.
Nope. Tricia Gooderson?
Ike?
So, I didn't know if the council had further considered the opportunity for better internet. Some parts of our city have Comcast, some don't. It would be really awesome, and I think probably a lot of people in the city already pay that for a crappy service. We started our business in Payson on Xfinity a couple months ago, and it has been amazing. So, I'm hoping that you guys will consider going forward with at least a survey to see if that benefits the city. Please.
Okay.
And I just have one other concern, the roundabout on Salem Hills Strip on the west end, it's already not doing well, and I know elders are getting ready to build, and so I hope that the city has a plan for fixing the roundabouts, especially since their street isn't going to have a roundabout at the end. They're going to continue using.
You mean cul-de-sac.
The cul-de-sac.
Turn that out, turn that out.
Turn around, which is really tight anyway. We always get trucks coming up the edge all the time. But it's coming up already, and heavy construction trucks are going to make it come apart more. So, I just hope the city has a plan for getting that prepared. Thanks.
Thank you.
Joe Chase. Just want to talk about the bond payoff you're considering tonight. Favor of pay it off. That was probably the time that seemed like a good decision, but since then, we look back, it's been a bad thing. If we have a chance to pay it off, let's do it and be over with it. You know, the city has suffered financially because of it. Let's get the cash flow back and move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kay Douglas.
Yes, I'm Doug Bezzant. I'm here representing some of the neighbors in this commercial district. I am a municipal planner by trade, maybe consoling currently. I'm sort of like building official, building inspector, fire marshal, fire inspector, Mr. Green, who knows me well. So, there's a lot of questions I have in regards to this commercial zone. In fact, if it was coming up my jurisdiction, it wouldn't even be ready for a planning initiative because of the questions and the designs that I would have as a planner. So, I would like to reserve some time for when this comes up for discussion and maybe point out some weaknesses that I see currently. I am representing some of the neighbors there.
Will you make sure you get with Royce instead of time up where we can have some discussion?
Absolutely. Now, does this gentleman here, your planner, appear in the white shirt?
Yeah.
He is your city planner.
Okay, next.
Chelsea.
I'm Chelsea Tripp, and basically, the question, the remarks that I will have to say are based on what my representative will be discussing with you, so.
Thank you.
I always check with her, and I'm good with that.
That's all, Royce?
It's all basic, you check.
Courtney, then.
I'm Courtney, and.
I'm Courtney and my remarks are in regards to the Haskell memory care facility that's being proposed and also the commercial plop there that's being talked about. I guess I'm just gonna, the comments, I have a lot of things I could say, but I'll keep it short. I just wanna make a comment, if you got the minutes from the planning meeting that happened, the owner of the current memory care facility that's here in Elbridge basically stated that he was a partner with Mr. Haskell and bought him out. And now Mr. Haskell's gonna build a very similar facility right in front of his. And he said it took him two years to fill that facility. And he said that if my facility goes under because the facility's in front of it, it's gonna have a better view. It's gonna be taller. And he says if I go under, then, you know, he says, I don't mean to sound like I'm threatening, but he said this in the planning meeting, that I would seriously consider turning it to a drug rehabilitation facility. He said, I've already had people come up to me and ask me about it. And, you know, I have to feed seven kids and I have to do what I need to do to stay in the business. And I just don't see how we have empty commercial property right on Salem, on the main street, right in Salem, that's sitting empty. And somehow this developer thinks you can fill commercial property up here. And I also am super concerned about the traffic, as other people have mentioned. You know, coming up Elbridge Drive already, it's two lanes, it's already crowded. And I just feel like there's not been enough questions asked or has not been. You know, I don't think a lot of the residents in Elbridge even know that this is being proposed. And I think if they knew, there would be an outcry. And if this pushes forward, I plan how I'm doing my best to let everybody know about it. Thank you.
That it? All right, let's go ahead and get rocking and rolling here. Bond payoff, sales tax, any further discussion on that? Or can we just go right to a motion? You got the numbers? Are you making it?
Yeah, I got too many papers here.
I think you should rebel and make somebody else.
No, Nelson's in the top. He's been here the longest.
Okay, so what is the resolution number, Royce?
It's gonna be seventeen ten twenty-four dash one R.
We've got a good system there.
All right, I'll make a motion that we pass resolution seventeen dash ten dash twenty-four dash one R to pay off the bond early in the amount of four hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and do amend our budget accordingly.
Great. One second now. Del Bigler, second that. Let's do a roll call vote. Start over here with Paula.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, motion carries unanimously, so we are going to be out of debt as a city. That's awesome. All right, LDS church preliminary plat discussion and decision. Any further discussion on the preliminary plat approval from these guys?
I don't have any questions. I mean, they addressed all the issues of the residents around them. As far as I could tell, all the drainage, planting, everything's unaddressed.
Shay, are we clean on this?
We are. Do you have my previous memo because I made a recommendation with the motion? Just to make sure you cover.
I think I saw that.
Because we did have, I'm not sure if it was sent in this packet or not.
No.
I didn't get it. I didn't get the memo.
It was a memo from last time. I haven't written a new memo.
But it's not in today's more recent? Can you email it really quick? Do you have it? You pulled it up?
Yeah, I can probably.
Because they were asking for a couple more extensions just because of the timing of getting involved in that. And also, I'd like the motion for the rezon and also for the preliminary approval based upon the use, based upon them being able to purchase the property and the use remaining as a church. So that we don't rezone and then that falls apart and we now have land that are public facility that.
So it's rezoned based upon the church going in? And if the property doesn't sell and the church doesn't go in, then the zoning?
The zoning doesn't change.
Doesn't change, then it stays residential.
Sounds like a motion for a term.
Find that motion.
Brittany has an X on speaking voice.
Okay. So I make a motion that we rezone the parcel. Hold on. Let me find the parcel number.
Thank you.
So I've got that, but it doesn't have the parcel number in it. The motion doesn't. Or the memo doesn't.
Well, part of the problem is it's only part of the parcel. It's not the whole parcel.
Three point eight three acres. So this is still three point eight three acres?
It's gone up now, but four is.
It's the southernmost.
But I mean, it's the Armstrong property, but let me find the parcel. Do we have a parcel number?
Approximately.
Or just Armstrong property?
Well, this is a preliminary, not a final, right? So correct. We can get that massage a little bit before the line.
So I'll make a motion that we rezone four point one three acres on the south end of the Armstrong property located at eleven fifty North Rocky Mountain Way approximately to be rezoned to a public facility zone contingent upon the purchase of the property for construction of an LDS church.
That worked.
Right, that's separate motions, right?
Okay, motion's on the table.
I'll second it.
Nelson seconds that. Do we have to roll call on that? On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes.
And then it was the extension that they wanted, right?
That's right.
Okay. Okay, so I'll make a motion that we grant two one-year extensions for the preliminary plat approval for the four point one three acres of the LDS church on the south end of the Armstrong property.
Motioning to approve the preliminary plat on some.
And perlu approve the preliminary plat.
There you go.
Okay.
Okay, Brittany makes a motion. Anybody second that?
I'll second it.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, last item of business, Haskell memory care facility continuing, conditional use decision. Now, if you wanna make a motion and we can have a discussion after the motion's made, or?
I don't wanna make a motion because I am concerned that we're gonna have to turn our EMT staff into a full-time EMT staff.
Yes.
Okay, is anybody gonna make a motion? Going once. Going twice. Now we put a motion on the table? We're moving on. No motion on the table. All right. That basically means there was no action on that and.
And both our official councilmen go back to the work session?
So if I can get somebody to go ahead and close this regular council meeting adjourned and then we will then continue our work session.
So stated.
So stated. I have a second.
Second.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Back to work session. Wow, I like the way you're at.
Eighteen minutes.
Eighteen minutes.
Eighteen minutes. No, your kids cannot leave yet. Eighteen minutes. It's usually like an hour and a half.
You get in the gym now?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do a work session here. Sure, go ahead.
But I would, I think it would be good for us to get some metering flush.
If you even put it in an email and send it to us.
We would appreciate it.
Then we could all read it over, make sure we know.
Because your skill set isn't an area that none of us have.
If you wanna have a face-to-face, that would be gratuitous, so. Well, maybe at the end, right? Maybe at the end, so.
Yes, tonight we have to stay.
Okay. Let's go ahead and get through the rest and go to another work session. So we'll do the elders right now. I think that the rest of it. All right, so did you read the?
Do you want to make my list?
Yeah. Yeah, I read it.
Yes.
Do you know what's, what issue, what we understand? The motion said up to?
Yep.
Right? And so we wanted to bring it forward for discussion to make sure that we understood what the council's intent. Here it is. Right? On that, on that motion, I make clear of case on that and the remaining sixty-one twenty-eight that would be up to the twenty-five.
So up to is based upon the actual construction costs, right?
Up to is based on the actual construction cost. And then we said we would reimburse that with these four different areas, right? Which doesn't come up to nineteen, that doesn't come up to the full twenty-five, six thousand short.
Right.
Right.
So, okay, so here's my question. Just, I mean, I think we should all be equal, right? But it's based upon construction costs. And if permits have to be paid before construction costs come in, I mean, we've gotta even up at some point in time, but my question is at what point in time?
You're under one of the checkbooks, it's balanced.
Right, because, right? Okay, so if we give them the six thousand in permits and then the construction comes in and happens and it's less, then they've gotta pay the same back. I, right? That's, that's my issue.
So what you're saying is if it comes in under twenty-five on the grant, the difference?
The actuals.
The actuals.
At what point in time does that happen?
Where's the reckoning for the balance sheet? Where does that balance up?
Yeah, that's fair.
And that was my only question.
So we'll pay the actuals up to that, up to the twenty-five.
I'm okay with that, right? I think that's what's fair because that's, and that's gonna be levied across to the property across the street.
And that goes levied across to the property and the city's gonna take the burden, you know, the long-term.
Right, financial, right? The city bears the long-term financial burden on that. Yes.
Which property is this?
Well, just until the developer comes.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Right, and yes, until that other parcel is developed.
And we actually got a new bid on it and it's actually a hundred and ten, not a hundred and seven, so. But percentage-wise, it still should be really close to that amount that we gave you, the twenty-five thousand. And then I found out there was more fees that I didn't know with the rope. All of the, I knew about the durability retainer, but the engineering inspection fee, which is six percent plus administration fee plus a durability inspection, so there's easily ways you could take with that.
Yeah, right, exactly. But I, I think that's, I mean, next time around, we'll just put that on and clarify the, clarify it, right? The motion and.
And I think what it came down to was the wording because we said water rights impact fees. So then they said they couldn't take it from anything else. So I think we just need to change those wording.
We'll just clarify that to make sure. You okay with that? We'll put it on the next agenda to make sure that we make that clarifying motion there.
So they have to come and hit?
So, well, they did.
They're sitting out there having their best friends or the worst enemy.
Coming, it felt kinda like something was missing, right? Really? You can come.
So I don't see this, unless somebody's bringing it up right now. If you don't have, if you have an issue, bring it up right now.
No, I think that's fine.
I really think that that's reasonable.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll put it on next time around and get her taken care of.
So do we know, because the problem is I can't get my permit to build until this is approved because the money has to be paid now.
Can this be done by a poll?
Could be, I think.
After the council meeting, so that then it can be ratified in the next meeting.
Could be. Is there any reason why it can't be? Royce? Okay, watch for email. All right, check. Crosswalk on Elbridge Drive. You saw the?
Yeah.
Yeah, the bridge.
The bid.
What kind of payment are you using?
Seven hundred and fifty bucks, I'll go get some payment.
Are you kidding me? I was like, that's a great deal.
Hey, so I have a question about this. This is to go, this is, I think I missed this discussion last time when I had a.
Yes.
Oh, for the, to the mailboxes.
It's this to the mailboxes. So here's my question. Have the residents talked with the post office about moving their mailboxes down and around the corner?
Either way you do it, you're gonna have mailboxes on either side.
Well, no, but if you, if, yeah, but, yeah, but, right? The residents on that side and, yeah, the ones that live on the other side. Have they had that discussion with?
But that only addresses half of the issue.
Yeah.
Only half the issue.
Because it's a third of the issue.
Oh yeah, maybe even less. So you've got, you've got the mailboxes, but then you've got the kids going across the street to the buses. And then you've also got this new trail piece that is in that, that piece and you connect and you need to be able to direct people across to a safe place to designate this is where you should cross because we've got a lot of crazy stuff going on there. It's not a normal intersection type.
Because we have a lot of crazy stuff going on there, I do not think there should be a crosswalk there. I think that makes it even more dangerous. If you wanna crosswalk, you put it up the hill farther. Put it a hundred yards up the hill farther.
No, that's not.
Or fifty yards, fifty yards up the hill.
Hey, if it will slow people down, so I don't get hit.
This is up from, this is not skyhook. This is.
This is.
Yeah, it's right, yeah. I know. And we've already talked about all the issues.
And there's a junior high school bus stop there that a bunch of kids have to cross the street in the dark at seven in the morning to get to. Like this is the liability on the city.
Put it fifty yards up the street.
And talk to the bus company.
You know what? The bus, you know what? The bus companies would put it up there if that's where the crosswalk is and that's where the light is.
Except you can't put crosswalks in there that are a big cross like that. I mean, there's no cross.
This is the same issue for so many residents.
The uniform traffic code stuff that says you gotta put it in certain places, right?
Well, maybe fifty yards up the road, you're right in the middle of the planner's strip. Like you're, you have no entrance through the walkway to a sidewalk. You're cutting through the rock.
You'd have to take out the curb, you'd be D.A.
You'd have to cut all that down, ADA ramps put in, make an entry into the path.
He's at seven hundred.
And then you're gonna, eventually all that's gonna be for knock because they're, that'll go right into the school in the middle of the school property.
Yeah.
So I, here, I just think this is adding liability to the city by us putting it there.
By putting it.
You know what? If it's, it's on the school district, if they make those kids cross that street to get on the bus, then the liability's more on the school district.
Yeah, tell it's your kid that gets hit.
Guess what? Just because there is a crosswalk there does not mean the cars are going to stop.
But if there's something you can push and the lights up, the chances of that go up.
It doesn't, I think we're adding more, just my personal opinion, we are adding more liability to the city by putting a crosswalk on an already dangerous street.
You gotta put it somewhere they're gonna go from one side to the other. The trail ends there.
Yeah.
How do they get from one side of the trail to the other? Go all the way to the roundabout, walk around the roundabout and then back down the hill?
That's awesome.
They're not gonna do that.
Then put it down farther, put it down farther.
But that's where the trail ends.
Down past skyhook.
Where you got the night curve? Well, we can't go beyond that because it's not a road.
Yeah, we go the blind. Then when the cars are coming around the blind.
No, that's our thing. Put it fifty yards down past skyhook.
No, it needs to be up there.
I just think we're adding more problems. We're adding more problems.
Let's just let kids die.
They're gonna cross anyway. You might as well have glaring lights saying, hey, they're here.
That's insane. My daughter crosses there sometimes, like I'm, this is a concern to me.
That's where you cross. That's where the trail ends. Go across the road, pick up the trail, right?
Just because people are gonna drive unsafe doesn't mean we don't do it.
Can't imagine doing nothing better than doing something.
No, I'm just saying we put in a different spot.
But when you're driving through the Salem and the things are lit up and you can see people are gonna cross, do you, I always slow down and almost every way.
Gun it, take them out and then see the city.
They got one down there by Salem, Salem Hills High School.
That's what I'm saying.
People blow by that all the time.
With the lid, the stop sign? See, I never see.
You're not gonna stop them. This is not enough.
You're not gonna stop them, but they.
Listen, Sherry has a lot more ammunition to nail them. Am I right, Sherry?
Where is she?
She's high.
I need deputy road.
You can get a lot more ammunition.
Your ticket is bigger, you get a bigger ticket, right, if you go through a school zone, or a.
If it's a school zone, you love a school zone, when it becomes a school zone, yeah, your tickets are higher.
It is not a school zone.
But if the crosswalk, that doesn't do anything?
But it's not, it's not.
I see both your sides, it is a very dangerous area where they're gonna cross, and crosswalks have, give the walkers a sense of safety, that cars blow through, blow through so often. You need to have, you need to put a streetlight so they can be, this is gonna be a well-lit area.
Oh, heavens no.
No, it's not well-lit, there's no lights out.
Dark sky compliant.
We have an option for lighted signs, but not.
Yeah, the light-up signs that will light up.
Is it just gonna flash, or is it actually gonna turn red for the cars?
Ooh, I don't know, okay.
It's always gonna flash.
Just flashing yellow.
Warning somebody's built a crosswalk.
And is it gonna flash, or when you actually hit?
No, 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 you hit the thing, so it turns it on.
When the flash comes on, so that people.
Well, there's one walker.
We have to flash for half the price.
We need hit ones. No, 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 if it always flashes, everyone is ignored it.
Don't want it always on.
No.
No.
It's a, when you hit the button, they start flashing.
Can I mention something? On Center Street in Provo, it's really scary where they have those crosswalks coming across, heading west, 'cause they have the planters in the trees. And I've had two people come, and I always stop, but it scared me, I had to slam on my brakes, 'cause I couldn't see them crossing into those trees.
Yeah.
I don't know where your trees are in the planter boxes there.
No, they're, no, this is the other side.
Yeah, it's on the other side down.
This is down.
So, it wouldn't be in the middle with that.
There's a cul-de-sac that goes off to the, to the east, right there, and then the school property.
Well, I think we oughta do it just where the trail system.
I think we need to do it.
Use, use some of our trail money to designate where the trail is, and redirect people, and have it be clearly marked as such.
I, I think it needs to be signed, and signed, crosswalk, flasher lights, and, and striped across there.
Well, I'd rather they cross over than up by the roundabout, because you have, you come around the roundabout, all of a sudden you got somebody, somebody
right there in the middle of it going, oh, you don't know what to do.
Stop ripping on me, stop ripping on me for doing that.
Not the worst place to cross, but.
So crazy.
That's a bad road, period.
While we got the blind corner, people speeding down.
All weaponed down, there's no good place.
I know, but I think we're just, right?
They are gonna cross.
Yeah, they're gonna cross anyway.
The four-way style there, that, um.
Are gonna cross.
No, which would be horrible for the children.
I just, right?
Supposedly, it'd slow people down.
Alright, so, okay, so.
I mean, this is.
And there's no way we can push this into the people, you know, the curb.
Our recommendation is to strike it, to put in the flashing signs.
There's no way we can also do the blind corner while we do this, pushing the curb in now, and it's going out.
And pedestrian.
Is it really, let's see, I almost got hit just the other day.
Right now, so, right now, there is two crosswalks, there's a crosswalk, so those kids know they have to watch and they have to pay attention. As soon as you put that there, then all that goes out the window, because there's a crosswalk, and I can just walk across it anytime without looking or paying attention. And that's when your kids are gonna get hurt and hit. And trust me, this is what I deal with every day, or watching kids in the ICU hooked up. This is what I do every day, and I think we are doing a disservice to everybody who lives around there by putting that in. Because then we tell our kids, it's safe, don't worry, you don't have to look when you cross the street. Just go ahead, because you have a crosswalk, and even though technically, technically, you have the right of way, but who's winning between a car and a kid? Who wins that?
So, why did anybody put crosswalks there? Why do they ever put a crosswalk in? If it's, if it's less safe? I don't get it. What's the point?
Hopefully, parents are teaching.
I don't know why you have crosswalks.
But see, in cities, in cities, yes, but up here, people don't have, people don't know about crosswalks, kids don't know how to use crosswalks, kids don't, because they don't live in the city. We don't have crosswalks anywhere around here, right? How often do your kids cross a crosswalk at school?
So, either the parents have to drive them across the street where it's safe, or.
I mean, in the cities where they're using them all the time, that makes sense, but we are not a big city, we don't have crosswalks, our kids don't.
But then when we don't have a crosswalk and someone gets hit, then is the city gonna be sued, because we have nowhere for them to cross safely? I mean, I think that's a liability for the city, like, this has been brought to our attention by multiple residents, including me, saying, my daughter crosses there. And, and I think if we do nothing, then we are being negligent to those complaints and those people, and if some kid gets hit, it's on video, that we talked about it, and we did nothing.
No, but I, no, I think the issue is of where we're putting it, we are putting it in a, in an already dangerous area. We wanna put one in, that's great, but put it in a safer spot.
Like, but that argument, like, so don't wear seatbelts, 'cause it's already dangerous, and you have a false sense of.
Another safer spot, you have to take the cars out, and then you want to be a safer spot.
To me, that's not like a.
Yeah.
No, seatbelts are a totally different issue.
What you're saying, because it, it gives you a false sense of security, so now I can, you can't make that argument and make it apply to every, like.
I'm not making it apply to everything, that's what sidewalks do, across, that's what sidewalks do.
I think also, too, something that, that thing about too is.
They also drop.
Hang on, hang on.
I mean, we, I, I agree that we're not a, a big city, but we are a growing city, more cars, more kids, more, more everything, I mean, gone is the day of our small-town feel. It's time to educate and grow up, we might have to do a crosswalk to keep, I mean, if, if nothing more than it, it flashes and sends, you know, give, makes people pay more attention to that specific area, might be what we have to do, we don't, I don't know, but.
And that might be how they learn how to do it, when they cross it with their parents multiple times, before people on their own, to get the nail.
We might have to start educating our kids on using crosswalks.
If, if the parents would do that, right?
I mean.
Well, but I understand are ones that are crossing it there.
Well, I'd say right now, why was I turning down there, I'd be doing everything I could to teach my kids the proper way to look both ways, because as a five-year-old, I got blocked by a motorcycle, and I spent an entire summer laying in a bed, let me tell you. I won't cross the road until I've looked both ways probably four times.
But if this isn't, right, their complaint is to get their mail, so my question is to look back to.
Not just that, but also there's nowhere to cross.
The mail is secondary, your parents can swing by and give it away.
We can fix the mail, actually.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, if that's an issue, let's talk to the post office about moving the mailboxes.
But it's a little, a bus stop, it's a junior high bus stop right there.
These complaints are coming from adults, too, trying to run on the trail, cross with bikes, I mean, it's, it's a wide.
Runners. I've had a few near-death experiences, with flashing lights.
I mean, the bus stop is an overpass, but we're gonna get one of those, there's just no way.
You're reaching the blind corner, and you're gonna get hit on the pass.
Get me some phones, I'll get some Boy Scouts, we'll lash them together.
Yeah, there you go, there's our Eagle project, right there, that's an overpass.
I don't, I, my concern is just the, just the location of it, I.
But where else are we gonna, we can't put it up high, it's the bus stop.
The bus can move the bus stop.
Well, good luck with that, good luck with that, 'cause I tried.
Why don't we have, why don't we have the.
Why don't we have the input from, I see, just see what his suggestions would be.
If I had a trail that is crossing a road, I'd have it striped by tomorrow, because if you introduce pedestrians to that location with the intention to cross the street, I would put crosswalks at every intersection that you can afford to put them in, where you have sidewalks that cross into a street. The, the argument, I, I totally respect the argument about dead kids or whatever, but it comes down to a liability to your city, a huge liability, if you introduce foot traffic, then you better have a crossing, and mark it well, the traffic needs to learn how to deal with the crosswalks, and they'll become familiar with them. And pedestrians need to be taught, that, that argument has gone on for ages. But stripe, stripes, stripe, at least give the, the cars, there's a warning, there's a the Marat Canal Trail that goes through Orem, Linda, Pleasant Grove, Cedar Hills, every time it crosses a street, you'll see that that thing has big crosswalks, they're marked in broad, because they probably don't do it on the bikes at forty miles an hour, and the only hope is the cars know by that definition that this is a big crosswalk. And the traffic's having to learn that, as in an accident, of course, because the bikers come through at ninety miles an hour.
The, the trail ends there, though, right? It doesn't continue on Skyhawk.
It jumps over across the street and goes, there's a big thick sidewalk, right by that new model home, and all the way down there.
And then takes the sidewalk, and you take the sidewalks over, and it loops over the electrician's.
Yeah, so it's, it's, we're just saying sidewalk, it's not like a trail, though, right?
But it's like a bigger sidewalk, like, I think it's supposed to be the continuation of the trail?
No, it's not, it's just.
That's a city sidewalk.
Well, there's no other place to run, so like, I run that twice a week, and I jump over and jump on that next to it, yeah.
It is a city sidewalk.
But, but that's what I'm saying, that, that, that. The, the trail, the trail ends there, though, that's what I'm saying, the city trail ends, there is no connection to anything else.
Then we shouldn't have put an ADA curb there, and we should have put a dead-end sign. But we didn't, 'cause it goes across the street, goes to the mailbox, and it appears as the way it comes into the street, that you're gonna go across the street, pick it up on the sidewalks, and then you want. And that's really the only way you get to the other side of the trail anyway, the other side of the city.
That's the only way you can do it, it's a connected.
We don't have any other thing.
We don't have a shortcut on that.
If that, if that piece of property develops right there, we'd probably end up putting a trail, right, on the north side there, or on the east side.
Yeah, I, I think we need to stripe it, put pedestrian crossing there, and I, I think the flashing lights do make a big difference. Rather than just a light, just a sign, I think a flashing red light, uh, makes a difference.
You can put a red one, you gotta put a yellow.
Yellow.
It's gotta be yellow, yeah.
It's gonna be yellow, or it can be.
Yellow, or whatever, a flashing sign makes a difference.
Alright, well, do some, do some soul searching on that, because, well, we've got a few weeks.
I was thinking for like a party. Wait, a few weeks, oh, 'cause we gotta vote on it.
We have to get approval for the funds. Not for striping.
Not for striping, you can do that.
The price is on the signs.
Yeah.
Price is on the signs.
Make sure everybody handles, yeah.
The thing is, too, they're gonna vote on that school bond soon, because.
No, we're not in that next round, we're in the round after the next round.
But that's not too far out.
Depends on how.
So, so, do you, do you want the mayor to make a unilateral decision on putting stripes in?
Well, you have the authority up changing it to two thousand dollars.
Absolutely.
Two thousand dollars.
It was two, and that was seven hundred.
Not that probably, it is.
No, that's what the mayor can spend without getting, so it'll just be the crosswalk.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, let's do that now, and then get that.
Well, we need to get it queued up, and I don't know, depending on what the weather's gonna be, and timing, and it's gonna be checked, right? But for getting the, the flashing signs and stuff, we'll have to get you guys' approval from you all, because of the cost.
And the curbing, we can't bring the curbing out on the blind corner? Guys, I almost got it this week again.
Slow down.
It's not me, I literally can't see.
Okay, the Asworth property.
We're just gonna take right-hand turns away from that intersection, no right-hand.
You wanna introduce the Asworth property?
Okay, go left, too.
So, I got confused with the nature, you got Asworth and Ashworth.
I'm sorry about that.
No, that's not from.
This is, yes, so this is, so this is a a parcel that's, uh, actually.
The Harises and the Dunes.
This is in the Harises and Dunes. In Harises, there's, there's two partial, parcels there that were split, we now know that the, the split occurred in May of nineteen seventy-nine. Interestingly enough, that deed's not recorded on the, online, but.
So, I, yeah, I had a question about this, about the split, because the same person bought all that land. The same person owns both those parcels, and then, so, right, mom and dad have the property, dad dies, mom dies, property goes into trust, and then, once then, that happened, then ha, the south side was given to one of the family members, and the north side was given to one of the other family members. So.
But, wow.
I, you know what I mean, I'm not so sure when it was actually.
We know, we know that, we know that the deed that they provided us that has the description for that part, for the parcel, not for lot number one, but the split parcel was, was, uh, was from May of nineteen seventy-nine.
So, that's when the split.
So, that's, that's, that's.
That's when the owners split their own property.
That's, that's when.
Although it wasn't.
That's when that occurred.
But it wasn't recorded.
Well, that deed, no, they did, see, this is, this is where things get kind of interesting, and Dale, I was gonna put you on the spot for a minute, because I, as I was looking at some of those plats back at that point in time, your, your signatures on some of those plats is, is part of the.
Yeah, that's, that's probably about the time that we became a town council, you know.
So, so let me, let me ask you, yeah, let me ask you a question, because we have, we have this, this lot, we have another lot that looks like it was possibly split about the same time, same type of situation. Then we have a parcel that the folks own on, on Park Drive, and we have one other parcel, I believe, that were taken out of the quote-unquote, open space from, from plat A and plat B in Salem Hills, and it looks like, so it looks like.
They created a lot, a lot out of the open space.
Correct, so it, it looks like, and, and this is what I was curious if you might remember some of the history, 'cause all I'm going off of is just dates that I see on parcels, and just, just generally what I'm seeing happening. But, so, the Schullers and, and Mr. Wentworth, so they started out with, with plats A and B under, and those were done in the early seventies under the county. And, and they were approved, and they were approved with open space, but the open space wasn't dedicated to anybody, it's just shown and called out as open space on that, on.
And that's how Elbridge was originally supposed to be built, was these bigger lots with open space in between, green space, right, open space, and then.
And that's it, that's what was, that's what was originally there, and then, and then we come to Salem Hillstown, Elbridge Town, whatever you wanna call it, it seems to switch between the plats, nobody knows for sure what it is, but at, at that point in time, and that's, and that's the later seventies, seventy-six, seventy-seven, that, 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 that comes into being. And at that point, the, the next plats that occur with Salem Hill subdivision no longer have the open space. We see three, I think, three or four plats at that point in time, and then we see another shift to where we go from having a mix between large lots and small lots, to the last three plats, and, and actually, one of the plats on what's now Candy Bead Drive being replatted in small lots. And, and that seems to occur in that seventy-nine period, and, and I'm looking at this, that is also the point in time when we start to see the little pieces of the open si, open space sold off to, to neighbors, and, and like I say, these, these other lots seem to occur at this point. However, from what we're seeing in the records, it looks like these lots that were split off were, were provided services. So, there had to be some sort of interaction with the, the, the town at that time, and they couldn't just go out there and dig in the street and, and tap on stubs without any, any communication with the city. So, I'm, I'm thinking that there was some sort of.
We would think, we would think. Who knows?
So, I'm just, I'm just curious, if, if you remember any of the.
My thinking is.
That's about how hell back hole is.
That's the, you know, you had a, you had a requirement after you become, you have a hundred and fifty people, that you have to incorporate into a township, that was the county's requirement when they allowed this. We, we incorporated, and they kinda pushed that to incorporate into a township, we had zero, zero, uh, assistance and, and professional, uh, you're, you are, it, it was kinda just dumped on, okay, who wants to be, we had a little, uh, little, uh, voting, had a mayor, city council, uh, town council, and set that up, uh, the developers actually, in, in my opinion, you know, it, it would have been, the county should have helped, uh, helped us a lot more back then, and given us some, some mountain lands representative or something that just helped to, helped to identify the process here. People, people probably just, my, my recollection is, people that had an acre, you know, I know, on, on my cul-de-sac, it was all acres before. People decided to, to divide it, subdivide it, but they have to get it recorded at the, at the county, county reporters, before you can sell it, sell a lot, you know.
They recorded deeds, but there wasn't any certification from the city recorded.
They, they did a lot. Jim Winterton did a lot, uh.
I'm just saying, there probably really wasn't anything.
Yeah, what are they gonna, just, uh, uh, it's, uh, just, just, uh, did, you know, you identify, you're, you're just identifying, what do they call that?
Surveyor.
The what, no, it wasn't a survey, it's, uh, he sold them based on.
It's just written on a, on a, on a boundary description.
Yeah, just the description, you know, of it, you know, it was, uh, it was not part of a, a plat, and, and really, really at that point in time, developers, that is. And, and really, really at that point in time, developers, it was just, it was mainly Jim Winterton that was the developer. How Schuler owned the property, but he ended up, you know, bankrupt on, on a lot of things because he was real wise and informed on business things, whatever they cost. But, you know, roads, you know, I remember, I just served for two years there on the town council. And I, I remember recommending that we have the eighteen-inch curb. You know, you don't want curving gutter because where's the water going? You can't, you can't run water somewhere. I said, okay, make it flat, but protect the sides of roads. They, there was opposition to that. No, the reason people move here is because they want a rural feel. That was their argument. I would have liked to have curb or gutter sidewalk myself because I just like clean, uh, clean borders. But there was not, there's not a lot of we in fact got in, got into some financial problems because of not having identified responsibilities and money's, money's paid. We had a city.
So don't they just boil that at this point to non?
I think they, well, so they still have to have it recorded for it to be an official split, wouldn't it?
So, so again, going, going back and, and what you're telling me here still backs up what the city attorney said, that basically we have to look at the point that we were incorporated as a city and, and anything that occurred before then, we basically, you know, his recommendation was we accept those as, as non-conforming legal lots of record.
So when did we become a city?
Well, so officially it was in, it was in two thousand, December of two thousand.
Well, that's when we became a city.
But when we were, yeah, the township was like middle nineteen seventies, right?
So, so can you tell, can you tell me this? Because this is part, piece of the puzzle that I, I'm not clear on, we don't seem to have records on. We know that, that there was, that there was the incorporation in Salem Hills Town in nineteen, December something, December twentieth, I think, of nineteen seventy-seven.
That's how, two years ago.
But then, when, when was the, when was the name change and the incorporation to? And the reason I ask that is because in nineteen eighty-six, there was an amendment. But as I look at the amendment that was recorded, all I can see on there that looks like it may have changed was, was the population, which the population still wasn't big enough to officially become a city. It hadn't reached a thousand people yet.
We were Elk Ridge Town.
Elk Ridge Towns.
And so I'm, and so I'm looking at this going, there was some point in between nineteen eighty-six and nineteen seventy-seven that, that there was a change between Salem Hills Town and Elk Ridge. But that was just, there's no.
There was a lot of confusion with the mail because of Salem and Salem Hills. It was called Salem Hills. And so we decided we oughta have, we oughta put it out to the citizens, see if they want to change name that.
Were you a town at that point in time? Were we actually a?
We were, we were a township.
In seventy-six, when it came to seventy-seven.
And so we had a, we had a number of different names that were presented. People voted on it and the Elk Ridge.
So we just changed the name.
But that was not, that was, that was actually, I think, while I was still on, so that'd be like.
Wasn't, so like in that seventy-nine?
Seventy-nine.
Okay.
You know, that, that we changed that to Elk Ridge Town Township, but it wasn't a city until you, you have to have what?
You have to have a thousand.
Thousand.
And so.
Thousand.
And that was in eighty-six, bro. In November of two thousand, I believe.
And, you know, there was no structured, in my opinion, there was no real structured.
So where do we go from here?
So, so what is it that we're trying to accomplish here? Is it just, we're just gonna give the blessing and go get the special recorder?
The reason that we're bringing this forward is just to, I mean, first of all, inform you of what we found. Realizing that as we talked to you earlier, there's, there's other lots up in there. I think we've identified about thirty-eight different lots in, in this older area in town that either fall under this time period or fall under the splits right there in the late nineteen nineties, early two thousands. That, and interestingly enough, the other thing is, is I've talked to a couple of people who, their, their properties were split in the late nineties, early two thousands. And their claim was, was that they did come to the city and did get approval for the split, that they went to a city council meeting, got approval. And then they just moved forward with the, with the deeds, that the city council didn't require anything. But the, the funny part of that is, is so we have those. And then we have some other lots up there on Oak Lane that were split in half so that they, so that there, there's two lots now facing each street. Those originally were just a single lots going through there on some of those.
Right.
And, and there's plats for those, amended plats. So some people during that period of time were recording amended plats, other people supposedly were coming to the city and getting approval, but there wasn't any, but the only thing that's recorded is, is deeds.
Yeah.
I can remember a few people.
I think Dean Ingram was the mayor at the time that all that happened because if you talk to some of the old timers that live like on Lakeview.
And this is a different Dean Ingram. I was like, the Dean Ingram.
Now I know why I'm riding.
No, they're not, they're not really, they're even not.
I was gonna egg his house, now I'm not.
But they it's, it's really interesting because some of these people split their lots and some of them didn't. And now if the people that didn't came in and asked, the neighbors that got the split would be upset that their neighbors were wanting to have the same type of split that they had, so.
One person, one person that I talked to, this is kind of interesting, said, you know, and this has been a year or so ago that I talked to them, they said, yeah, the, the mayor, after we approved this and we got the building permit, the mayor helped us on the, on our house.
Helped us with the construction of our house, so.
Yeah.
It's a. So, you know, like in particular with this one, this one's right next, it's between Ken Harris's property and Dennis Dunn's property.
Yes.
Where there's the two lots. And Dennis bought his property, I think, from the Ashworths, if I remember right. I could be off, but I, I think we probably this was all done about the same time.
Yeah, that's when he bought his lot. So your lot and, and the mayor's lot were part of the, is it called Ironwood or Ironridge subdivision?
The Ironwood, and I think that was actually Cecilia and Alvin Harward's property that bought it from the Ashworths.
It was Harward's.
So the Harwards bought the three, the three lots all in one section from the Ashworths and then the Harwards sold, sold one lot to the Dunn's and then they built on the other lot and then they split that lot and built where in the Snyder's house now is.
The Harward's signature is on that plat.
That's it, that's the Harwards, yeah.
Yeah, so.
But, but so my question is.
Do we just deal with these as they come forward? I think.
Well, well, so, so these guys are wanting to leave on a mission and they'd like to, to sell the lot. So they've asked us to, to see if we could get some sort of decision on this one. But what we're hoping to do is try to bring these other ones forward, figure out what's legitimate and what's not and, and get, get a feel for what they're, what's there and then just basically bring those forward and by resolution, just approve them as, as non-conforming lots of record. So we've got something.
So Shay, Shay, my, my concern with that is, we just got through taking care of the Turner's lots that were non-conforming and we made them conform to the current standards. We said, sorry.
Well, they were.
You've got to conform to what the current standards are. You have non-conforming lots. Go redraw the plats, make them as one, you know, take, take those three lots and make them into two lots so they fit.
Correct.
So I have an issue with saying, Turners, you go conform your lots and instead of having three lots to sell out, now you only have two because that's what conforms. And then we say to the Ashcrafts.
Ashworth.
Ashworth, okay, it's okay. You can just have non-conforming lots. And the neighbor around the street, I like you, so you can have non-conforming lots, but you, nope, you go conform.
There's a difference there. And, and that is, there's a, there's a difference and that is that the, the lots that, that in the Shedhorn subdivision, he was creating a new, a new building lot. The, the two other, the two other pieces were, were never they, they weren't even the size to be able to create a building lot. They were just little pieces that had been purchased off of other pieces of property. And so in order to create that new lot, he needed to, he needed to subdivide that. He needed to be able to, and he was totally readjusting all the boundaries. We're not, we're not talking about adjusting boundaries here, but the lots.
But we are because he couldn't build on the lot because it didn't conform and it wouldn't fit a house and it didn't meet the frontage requirements and all the other requirements. And that's why he had to go redo the lines. So that's my concern, right? We made him go through the whole process to redo everything to make his lots conform. Right? And now we're saying with these guys, well, they're family. The lots right next to each other are family. I mean, it was mom and dad that gave them to the two siblings, right? I mean, the one could buy out the other or vice versa and then they'd have a conforming lot that could be built on and sold.
If these are by definition, legal definition, according to what we, what we've had before, right? Non-conforming lots of record because they were take, done before the city was incorporated, right?
Correct, that's what the city attorneys.
But, but.
Then they could, then technically, I guess, they could build on it, right?
But Dale said the city was.
No, I'm just saying.
Well.
If, if they're not, if that, if they don't meet that description, right? Then they need to figure out, combine them and make them a conforming law, right? It really boils down to that legal aspect of this, right? Because I don't know if any, I don't know how the council feels otherwise. If, let me ask you. If, if these were done after the city was, was incorporated and they're not a non-conforming lot of record.
Are we talking about incorporated township, right?
They were done before that, right? Sorry, after that, would you, would you still consider allowing this to become a building lot with no, with insufficient frontage?
If they were.
Would you grant an exception?
I wouldn't because we haven't done that with the other lots and I think we need to treat everybody fairly, everybody the same. And if you've got a lot that's non-conforming that was after the city
Right.
became a city or township.
So there's one no.
Then I think we treat everybody the same.
I can remember having, having a few people come to the town council requesting to split their lots. In fact, Dave Larson did it, you know, beside us. They, the town council approved that most of those were acre lots that were being, that were being split at the time. But, and they got them recorded and, and they were official, official description, a legal description. And they could sell them and they could build on them.
These weren't recorded.
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to look that one up and see whether it was recorded just by deed, like these are.
Right.
Or whether it was recorded with a, with a plat because I haven't found anything in the seventies so far that was actually recorded with a plat. I've only found, recorded by deed. And like I say, I've only, I've only found this one and one other lot so far. But I, so he's next to you? The, is the lots next to, next to your property?
No, oh, one that, one that.
Yeah, I'd just be curious to look that one up and see.
Yeah, yeah, Dave Larson was the owner up there. He had an acre and he split it into two, half, like, two lots. And John Peterson did it. And I, I remember John Peterson telling me.
I wanna, we gotta kinda get to an end point on this.
So the city attorney's recommending though that we just say it's a non-conforming lot and then sell it?
Well, he hasn't looked at this lot specifically. He's just given us this direction that he's basically said.
But based on the ones he's done, that's what our attorney. That's his expertise.
How big are these lots? Well, they were, it, it's another one that was, was just over an acre that was split in half. The only issue with this is the frontage is, should be, it's a hundred and three feet, so it's the same as Mayor Dunn's lot. It's the same as the lots that were above it that were was in subdivision, but now under our code, they.
But the other ones that we split for the Turners weren't lots before individual. This is different because it already is a lot, correct? I'm just trying to make sure.
It wasn't recorded though, that's the issue.
But that, is that the people that bought it's fault or the city's fault that we didn't record this splitting of it?
Well, the city doesn't, city doesn't know. The city does not record lots. You want your lot recorded, you take your plats in, you will get them recorded. They'll lay them out, we'll sign them, but it is ultimately their responsibility. And the city went to that because it is better for it to be on the owner to take care of that. I mean, these lots.
When you said the city went to that, so was it previously there was?
For a period of time, it was the city recorder.
When this was split, was the city recorder supposed to do it?
Well, I can tell you as recently as probably two thousand seven, our city recorder would literally get signatures and go deliver them, hand deliver them to the county.
So probably.
Oh, I'm absolutely certain.
So it probably was a city's.
So there's, so there's lots.
I mean, I, I have a hard time with this, with this whole process here where we're saying, okay, well, this should have happened and you know what? The individual that owns these lots, if, if, if the law was in his court, it would have been taken care of. I mean, this is the guy that's like Johnny on the spot. He's a very successful attorney. I, and I'll look at that and then you've got these lots over on Oak Lane. The frontages there are narrower than these two. They are. I mean, I'm looking at it right here. You've got ninety-seven feet.
Oak Lane is the R one fifteen thousand.
Right. But if you're that close and you're on the edge of that zone, I don't see how granting that would change that. You may not have the frontage, but you certainly got the land because these lots are huge.
Yeah, these are big lots.
I mean, there's.
Like half acre?
They're half acre lots.
They're right, half acre lots. That's it. Yeah, it was split from one to a half acre.
So.
The question is with the narrowing, I mean, as far as the house has to be set back, could you even put a building on that? Under our current code.
At a hundred and three, three feet?
Well, no.
Well, no, before the, it drops off.
Because it goes down the hill and it gets skinnier as it goes back. So you have, it has to be so far off the road. There has to be so much.
So twenty-five to thirty feet off the road and.
And then you have to have so much between your neighbors.
You're gonna have twelve feet on each side. So you're, you're still.
I mean, that, that's why Dennis's house is long and narrow because he did that to make it fit within the parameters that the city had.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know.
I think we should have the city attorney look at it and give his recommendation. What do you guys think?
He's gonna.
Well, I think, I think a lot of those things happened back then with that original township.
Does he know, say, do it? Cause he's the, he's the expert in this area. I, I don't know.
But those things, like, if they were planning to sell it or to do anything with it, they would have had to get it recorded at the county.
Yeah, I.
That's the, that's.
This is what we did.
No, they had an approved split maybe, but.
They didn't record it.
If you ever record it.
And this is what we did with Turner's because theirs wasn't recorded. And I say we need to treat everybody fairly. I mean, we treat everybody the same. It doesn't matter who the person is.
I don't even know either one of these people, so you can't, like, that's not what I'm doing. I think the situations might be different. I just don't like you inferring that I'm like giving favoritism because I'm not, like, I don't know either of them. I just, if the situation is different, that's why this is brought before us because it is a different situation, isn't it?
But both of them have non-recorded, non-reported.
Correct, but the, but I, and, and here again, I, part, part of the point with this is, is supposedly surfaces are stuffed into these lots. So there isn't.
There are services for two lots there then. I think it's like implied.
There isn't anything that, there isn't anything required to dedicate to the city. There isn't.
So, okay, so.
And Shedhorn is, there was, none of those lots were intended to be a building lot. There were no services stuffed into those lots.
There wasn't. That's what I was trying to say.
But do we know there's really services stuffed into those lots? What if they go to build and there's no services stuffed into those lots?
Find that out before we make a decision. Let's talk about it for another half hour before the mayor starts hitting me. Before we talk to this.
A lot of times they'll.
Well, then we just verify their services because I think if there is.
Let's get to that and then move on.
And, and I think.
I would agree with Nelson.
Right?
Verify the services.
In their services, then.
If the services were into the, into each of those as separate lots, I would say it was approved by the.
I think that water line that goes up there is probably only about eight inches deep, according to Ed Christensen. About twenty feet from his house.
Yeah, it's right by his front porch, like two feet off his front porch.
He hit it.
It's supposed to be out by the road, yeah.
So, who knows where that water line is? Alright, general plan.
Well, I'll ask that again. I, I've, that's, ask for somebody to check that and just.
And yeah, I just think, I think we need, like, that's just.
And yeah, I just think, I think we need, like, a systematic process, right? Where it's not like based on, he said, she said.
And that would do it, because if there's services brought to it, then obviously.
Right, but that's with all the other lots, right? If there's, if they were never recorded.
But there's services, then these, then we could just, that could be our.
That could be the standard, and if they were never recorded, there's no services, then no. It doesn't conform, you sell out to one of your neighbors, they make it conform.
Mine's the criteria, but it had services, then I didn't have to.
The mayor's gonna start punching me guys, we're onto each other.
Before we go to the general plan.
Do you want to be punched in the face?
Nothing about anything else, I just want to talk to Brittany, because she's the attorney, with what I brought up with you. Is there any liability to the city when our contractors out here don't follow federal OSHA law?
Our contractors or somebody?
No, we do contract.
So like, if they don't have a trench box in the trench, when they should have it?
Yeah, they're down six, six and a half, seven.
Because we're in charge of requiring them to do the.
Have them shut them down until they're compliant.
Because they're down in those holes six, seven feet deep without.
The case was today with the slop on the OSHA standards, so that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, and then we should shut them down, because there is liability to the city, because you love that.
If something happens, no, my wife will be down in the trench.
He meant that they sloughed it off the way they're supposed to, they didn't need the trench box, is what I found out today.
Well, they have to be within so many feet, they can't be anywhere.
And they meant that according to what I was told today.
When in question, we have our inspector go out and do his job. That's, that's, that's what we do, right?
Done with case. Okay, move on, general plan.
Okay, yes.
General plan. Yeah, general plan. Water red in this baby.
Yeah, and, and I'm gonna bring it up again here on the commercials.
That was just too much bigger.
We're effectively taking commercials out.
I don't know, this is the one that I had printed.
I know there's one out in the first station.
All right, I'll find it.
I live over it, I just need to print that out.
Eighty dollars a gate.
I mean, I, I've got a, really, the only thing, I have a significant issue with this commercial. Quite frankly, I don't remember us having a decision, what we said, we're not going to sell that, but if anything, we told, we told the people, Salisbury, that wanted to come in and build, that no, we had other intentions, but it wasn't within our city, so we weren't going to make a decision yet.
I think we need to leave commercial in.
I think we need to leave it in.
And the thing is, and if, and if past this thing fails or this doesn't go through, we need a commercial code, so the next thing that's proposed needs our commercial code.
I agree.
I, you know what I mean, I wasn't very happy to hear that they just backfired, but. Because if something comes in, it's to comply.
Jim, well.
What, what does the, what does the planning commission want us to do with this? Just review it, give feedback?
Okay, basically, the text, this is what they're submitting to you.
This is it, we take ownership from here?
Yep, and you see a lot of red that they were.
We can either add it or.
I see we send it back this time in the hospital property.
Just kill it.
No, this is the elder's.
This is a plan. Okay, so, it's in our court. I don't have any plans to send it back, well, I don't.
Well, there goes that.
Can I, can I throw something out here? I just. So, they've gone in, they've, they've put together this general plan, which basically, for the most part, was just erasing a lot of stuff out of the old general plan. Erasing out the policies and the goals, and, and then erasing other things that they considered fluff. Especially towards the end of it, you'll notice that.
Yeah, it was like.
You should look at what's been crossed out versus what's been put in there.
Well, they highlighted it.
So, I, I'm, I'm okay with the general plan being simplified, and, and reducing the amount of text. You know, some of the fluff is, is in there to try to justify, explain, you know, why, why we've, why we've zoned things the way we have, those types of things. But here again, I've seen other communities that, literally, their, their general plan is a zoning map, and, and not, not a lot more than that. So it's, I don't have a problem with that, per se, but the, the one piece of this puzzle is that, the question is, is how do we want to implement this? And what, and what do we want to do with implementation? And that needs to be spelled out in the general plan.
And you take out the fluff, then there's no implementation?
They felt like the goals and the policies were fluff that need to be taken out, and, and some of them were, you know, some of them probably didn't pertain currently, but what, what I would hope would happen was, maybe you guys think about this for a few weeks, go through it, look at it, and, and think about that. And if there's, if there's some ideas on implementation, some things that you would specifically like to see, put those down, and then, and then send it back to planning commission with that. I'm, I'm gonna.
Wait, I thought you weren't allowed to send it back.
I'm gonna put together some other ideas for implementation.
My foot, my foot down.
Okay, sorry, Mayor. You can do whatever you want.
You know what, Jim shouldn't have gone so early tonight, but the app is getting speeded, it's coming back.
We, they, the plan will be a lot more useful if we show how we want this implemented, so that people can understand the, the direction, and where we want to go with this.
My, my biggest concern about gutting it the way that it has been proposed, they say that those who do not study history are doomed to repeat it. A lot of what is in here is in here as a reference, so that we know from our history why we are, where we are, and we take that out, all of a sudden, we're gonna have an area where, maybe down on the north end, the area that isn't within our city boundaries currently, but could be. At one point in time, that was own commercial. Now there's like, no record of it at all, I mean, it's just, a lot of it just disappeared. And, and we start doing things like that, all of a sudden, we're gonna have somebody come in and say, you know what? I want to put an SOB right here, and we've got nothing to document or back up why we will or won't allow something to happen. I'm not saying we're gonna have that type of, of business here, but we, we need to have some of that there, and, and I really feel, especially when it comes to the commercial, I mean, it's like, we're betting that it's gonna take off, it'll be successful, this will be our only area, boom, we're done, once and done. Never a chance that things could derail or go sideways, and, I mean, I have an area near my house where it was zoned one way, the developer came in and was gonna be able to do all kinds of crazy things, and had the economy not tank, he would have, but now we're subject to our new code. And for us to pause some of that, because, well, we may be done, I, we gotta have something there, because I firmly believe that if you have it, and you build it, they will come. And whatever we end up with, our result, yes, and I've been there, if you don't have some direction there, we're gonna end up with what we have. This is gonna be the guiding principle. Future councils, future planning commission members, for at least, by the next time it's rewritten, are gonna use, they're gonna go to this as reference, when they make a decision and say, this is why I'm sticking my foot down and by doggone it, we're gonna put commercial back into our general plan.
Do you feel like with Nelson's passion, perhaps he should take on this project?
Well, I, you know, my, my, my option would be.
This is, I got over the city's.
My option would be to hand this off to a colorblind person, and it would all be the same and it wouldn't change. So, there you have it.
Nelson highlight the whole thing and turn it black, done.
I don't know, I want to, I want to think about it.
I mean, I think we've got some time to think about it, but I, as I reviewed it today, I thought, boy, you know, we're, we're jumping the gun, we're gonna take and strip the commercial out, we don't.
I wasn't thinking we were stripping that completely, well, no, they are, I know.
It is, it's.
But I, I thought we'd just put it on the back burner for a little bit.
It's deleted, yet we've got the senior housing piece that says, the area that is affected by this, this is what is expected.
Okay, I agree we should.
And same with the PUD piece, but yet on the commercials, like, should take it out. I think it might be a little early, and you can amend the general plan at any point in time in the future. So if that happens and we're done, then you know what, at that point in time, then we just go in and say, take it out. Or we'll be adding things in because the state legislature tells us to do it, so, we're done.
Wait, are we gonna talk about this at all?
I'm done with this. Oh, the internet? Yeah, we can, yeah, we should.
What do, what do we need to do for that, to get the survey?
Let's close out on the, let's close out on the, on these, let's get your input on that. I think everything else is done, and then they can go and we can, if anybody wants to talk about.
I mean, this is only eight twenty guys.
I know, but.
They have to post the workouts tomorrow.
I know, but you're ruining my record.
I want to get dinner from somewhere.
Mayor, one thing that, that needs to happen, probably their next, next meeting or December for sure, is that you need to designate someone to be the city's representative to, to, to the, like, one, to the dispatch. And it has to be done by resolution. And they usually meet, they meet usually the first Thursday, the second Thursday.
We can't do that till January.
What, oh, till we get our new council members, council members?
Unless you appoint somebody, it's gonna be.
Right, you need to be aware of that.
I'm going to say salvation.
Russ, you had a comment first.
Well, there was actually a general one, you moved on.
Okay. And I, and we have it right now, by the way.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
First off, let me tell you, I have never been so happy to be old, as I have tonight.
Wait, why?
I have gone through this process with two communities, starting out from towns, and taking them through the cities, and then massive growth. And it's hard, but if he's your planner, he's got a lot on his plate right now. Because everything becomes an emergency because of developers have all some pounced on your city. And, and as he was talking about, you know, the ordinances and land use codes and commercial definitions and such, if I were the community, I would tell him to post a story, University of Utah, pull one of their commercial codes or their codes, land use codes that they developed ten years ago, fifteen years ago, and keep updating it, and use it as a steering guide, to get some stuff in there to protect your community. Going to the reason why, here, the other thing is, when I heard you talking about these variances and that, as a city council, I highly recommend that you get a board of adjustments in place to deal with this historical stuff, consisting of a few citizens that's got common sense, and then a professional, and then of course your planner should be involved with the board of adjustments. That's where that should be handled for variances for these unique lots, you know, historically existing and such. They can make all these determinations, I mean, what will work using common sense, and try and comply with the codes as close as they can, and provide that relief to these people, instead of bringing them to your city council any free, easy property. But if you don't have one, then you are the board of adjustments.
In the meantime.
Sounds like Miranda, if you don't have one, then we'll be applying it for you.
And, and my purpose is not to come in and try and upstage your planner in any means, I mean, he's got a lot on his plate. It's a hard task to take community units just starting out, that's all of a sudden the city.
No, we just want, the more information, the better.
Yep. But going back to this commercial development, the things that troubled me is I got involved with this, and I, I'm gonna wear two hats tonight, I'm gonna try and represent them, because that's what they've asked me to do.
Because he's my brother.
I am their brother.
He asked to love me.
But one of the things, one of the things that kind of irritated me a little bit on the very first is when they were looking at acquiring their land, the first thing I asked them was what is planned or what is the zoning across the street? And the representation they made to me is the developer said, well, this all used to be commercial, and then he got the zone changed for the residential of this portion of it, and commercial on the other side. And that was a representation to me, and I, and I emphatically said, I don't care what the developer told you, go down to the city and find out what it is. Well, they went, they're sales rep, and they're sales rep, oh, yeah, we know it's commercial across the street, but the same family owns it, and they're, they're probably just gonna do what they've done down here. And, and he's misled a lot of those residences. But the thing that really struck me is, as I looked at this plan and presentation that came up with it, a couple of things happened, and it was probably not at any fault, it was probably just lack of understanding general planning principles back then. The streets do not make good boundaries between commercial and residential. And it is a practice that's very seldom done in any community nowadays, because then the traffic impacts come into a residential side, you have the commercial facades that are affecting the commercial side in here and reducing commercial traffic. One of the points that they brought up was that, oh, you want as many accesses as you can, so it minimizes traffic. Well, that's truly not the case when it comes to residential. You'd want to limit the access to a couple of points, and control the access away from the residential, and that's why backyards make best boundary lines, because then you can put in walls and fences and, and such to control. You don't want a ton of accesses for little kids to go running across the street over to the commercial area. A couple of things that really stood out in that plan really quick is they didn't really define the protected residential parking from the commercial parking within that project. And so it's gonna be free-for-all fight for traffic, parking spots between the commercial and residential. Even though it's a mixed use, it should never, never be allowed to have the residential traffic intermingled with the commercial traffic. They should provide residential parking that is specific to that residential, and then provide the commercial. The other danger to having that open access in multiple points is then it introduces a lot of traffic and people, and the kids' ability to get into that project. It all of a sudden becomes any neighbor kid or a little small kid now can run into the commercial area because there's so many accesses, when you really should try and separate those accesses to a commercial street, and not bring it into the residential. I know it's hard because of what happened with the historical zoning, and so now you got messed on your hands, no matter how you look at it, and I, I just don't know how he's gonna sort it out to deal with it, because the developer's gonna claim I've got commercial rights. When it comes to conditional uses, conditional uses are there for you to apply other restrictions because of that use to protect what's developed around here. You know, if I was looking at it on a legal basis, and I was gonna come and make a challenge or talk to attorneys and so, I'd say, they kind of made it a residential area when they allowed one side of the street to be residential, and then carry it along to the other side of the street and make a boundary, it's a good argument. Because you kind of defined the area, and one of the big key words that came out, oh, it used to be commercial, but we changed it to residential, and it sounds like the developer is price shopping for the best available development at this current point in time. He's trying to push whatever he can to get it developed and move on. And that can become a real danger to the community, it'll just not make for quality community. If you have multiple accesses off that street, then you're gonna have that tendency, like one of you spoke about, oh, there's gonna be commercial parking on the street all the time, and it will be, because they'll have quick access through to get, instead of fight for parking, they'll just take the closest that they can find, whether it be on a residential street. And looking at that plan, and it wasn't in very good detail, or it wasn't very clear, having a lot of accesses means you're gonna have tremendous commercial fighting residential parking on those residential streets. It will happen. If you want to see some huge mistakes, go to Pleasant Road, it'll be the one my family dwelling in the streets, and look and see what's happened to the streets, shrouded because it was open to accesses. And, and so people are lazy in nature, they'll take the quickest, closest path to wherever it is that they can get, regardless of what you put on that street. And so, the mixed use, I just have a hard time finding that that developer's really pursuing this. He must be trying to dump land, because a single story of mixed use over commercial is never successful, because there's just not enough density there to make it worth it. And I, I just don't see a single story mixed use commercial being successful ever. If you haven't got these three stories, when you do that kind of mixed use, you're trying to create a commercial district by bringing people into it, and they pollack county rooftops to enhance, and that's done by density. But when you're trying to do that, you really have to have a community that's built around that. You can see the university mall is now making that application to bring tons of high-density residential high-rise into that commercial district and making it a living center. And, and, boy, that, if you ever saw that one in program, it's taken, what, fifteen years to develop, went bankrupt twice. You know, they're covering all this commercial in and it's sad.
Oh, yeah, I know.
It's next street, hands on. It, it just, some of the developers come out with these rich ideas, but they bring it to a conservative area, it's not quite prepared for it, and so it's really risky and it's. And so it's really risky, and it surprises me that he's willing to take that kind of risk when there's so much single family around. So there's some real dangers to that. The other thing is, uh, I saw a real little fire apparatus turn points or turn lanes, because the parking's all intermingling with that.
Haven't you had that checked?
Well, I, I, that's what I asked, there really isn't a turnout, it's a drive straight through. And if you can't, if you park a fire truck, you gotta have your exit. And if you don't have an exit, you don't go in. I mean, we've got.
Yeah, you can't turn, you can't back those trucks up.
There, there are houses here in town, and if they catch fire, they're gonna sit back and watch it burn.
I don't know, be mine if it helps.
No, not yours.
But the danger is, is the fire apparatus turning areas also incorporate parking all around it.
Yes, and if there's a car parked there, then you can't.
If the angle's not right or somebody's sloppy, they're acting, they're, they're relying on perfection of people parking, and it never happens. So your fire marshal is gonna be out there every day issuing citations, and there're gonna be complaints. There's just not enough, because the whole parking's intermingling into that same lane of traffic. And it, Hingerd made the same mistake. They did the development, they had no garages or anything, and then it was just narrow. Well, everybody parks in front of the garage, puts something in the house or the garage, and the garden structure, and anything else. They're always, unless you can't get through your project. So it is really not very good in Hingerd. I would ask for a higher standard than that from developers, especially with the commercial. I would make sure that they put in the setting fence, as chain link fence, around the commercial area in front of residential road. Make them put in walls and vinyl, well, somebody said on that scene in Living, or in their living center, they're gonna put chain link.
Oh.
That cost it.
That was the church.
The church, which was, well, black chain.
It's what the residents.
Yeah, that's what the residents wanted.
Yeah, that's what residents asked for that, they were gonna do whatever.
The property, that's what they've asked for.
And, and, you know, it's.
Flat, flat.
Yeah, or something.
They don't want, no.
They want it so that at night, they look out and they don't see the fence and they can see the lights.
When they allowed that developer to encroach residential into what was commercial. Boy, he, he set those residences up for a terrible lifestyle that they really weren't intending. And I know personally that one of their people represented to me, oh, it's gonna go residential just like this, because there's not enough room for commercial. Well, that space really is pretty tight based on what they're proposing, and they're trying to get, both of them, they're trying to get that residential to, to finance it. And hopefully, maybe commercial will follow. And I just don't think the area's big enough to bring that kind of a draw in, you know, just have move in, move out type businesses.
Which I agree, but I don't know as a city council if we have the right to say. Do you know what I'm saying? You give me concrete reasons to not bring it in.
Absolutely.
I can get behind that, but saying, I just don't think it's gonna work, I don't think that's our place as a city council to say, that's a bad investment, we won't let you.
Right, no, that's not.
But you bring me concrete reasons like you are.
Sure, what I'm saying though is make them enhance that design so it protects the residential area that you've already allowed.
I can get behind that.
Yeah.
Maybe step it up and make them really make it something nice that neighbors can live with.
Okay.
And not have cars parked in front of their house, if somebody running across into a little business and stuff, because the residents are taking up all the parking for visitors. And do not ever let them downgrade your parking standards. I see city after city, they say, oh, two parking spaces for dwelling unit. Well, that doesn't take on the motorcycles, the boats, the trailers, the cars, and everything else.
Yeah, they bring them in.
And they bring them in.
Guaranteed.
And stay at two and a half.
Blocking access because the tongue sticks out.
Two and a half parking spaces for dwelling unit to handle your visitors and stuff. So when they start talking about, oh, man, you're parking, boy, that's the death, the neighborhood is inadequate parking. Or hard to get to parking. And available street parking in the residential area.
Yeah.
I have a question on that.
Parking spaces. On Elkhurst Drive, when they're turning into that parking lot, which now you have this high-density, tons of homes, are we making a separate turn lane? Cause right now, it's a single lane.
That's a good point.
What's happening?
Well, there isn't, there isn't a turn lane stripe there, like we've had, like we will have down here on Park Driving up on Hillside. And they got that striped.
But most of your roads in that area are actually a residential standard, we have.
Yeah.
Yeah, why?
So parking is gonna be your real street construction.
That's, that's honestly, that's why I think the commercial piece in the sustaining general plan. And, and be put back in on the north end where it's on the backs of the homes. Where you've got the, you can put the fence and you can define that better than this other, your next to major thoroughfares. Hey, you know what? It doesn't matter to me, I've got two years and I'm done, so you know what, I should get it done.
But, but remember, this project is substandard. It, they're, they're nickeling the diamond down to nothing and just demand the higher standard. And, and make them really show you that they've got the space for most of our trucks and apparatus. I don't know what your apparatus sizes are, but they're gonna keep going as your community goes. And so, I just, and like I say, boy, this is a tough situation to be in. I don't envy anybody that works for you or works with it, because it is hard to manage all these fires that are coming at you from all directions.
And quietly open spore.
And, and one of.
But your general plan is your most protecting ordinance. Believe it or not, that's your most serious important thing to get nailed down. And don't allow it to be opened up to the public to manipulate it. Open it up twice a year or once a year, uh, for the public to be able to make general plan requests or amendment changes. Leave it open to city council and planning commission make recommendations, but never allow the public or the developers to come in more than twice a year to make the general plan amendment. That is your protecting document, what's your vision of the community's gonna be. So, he's got so much on his plate, I just, I.
I feel bad for you, Shane.
Well, he's probably saying.
He's doing it being a joke, that's what he's doing.
Been there, heard that, when I heard him go through, I could just see the frustration, cause he doesn't have a toolbox and place to work with. And that's, that's tough, and developers can run all over you.
Well, that's why I say, if you have some concrete, like the, so the memory care thing, we can't just deny it, cause it's gonna put the other guy out of business. That's not the place of the city council, but based on that it's gonna cost the city money with the ambulance calls? Absolutely will deny that, you know what I mean?
With you guys wanting, not wanting the volunteer becoming a permanent EMS, that.
So that's a valid reason.
The high density will even make it so that our taxes are gonna have to raise because of police.
To the audience, that's not, that's not, you know, EMS is an all-inclusive. Growth is gonna happen in the community.
Well, it's, it's gonna happen, but the question is.
Yeah, but the senior centers make it so that we have the call volume, are they fifty percent almost, or is it not fifty percent? Thirtyish?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, because the.
But we have, we have four houses in the community that are twenty percent of the calls.
Oh, my.
Right now.
So you can't, you can't, like, you can't define the service based on that.
The Thomas's?
But what you can do is set the conditions on that traditional use, to where it looks nice and is forced to stabilize and controls the traffic, and you have them setting, they set the, you know.
Setting, they do have transport.
Landscaping and the walls.
We, we can do it here in Hillstone.
We'll take it, we'll, we'll look at this and see what we can do to try to, we wanna make everyone happy, but yeah.
Control them.
Like, we can't take away someone's rights, but we, we have no problem trying to make it so.
Yeah, which is a lot of, it just fits to our code.
But, that's what, that's, that's what I was gonna say, the issue is, is that our commercial code was like one page, and they can't.
Not even a page?
I don't know, like, you know what I mean?
University of Utah developed a code for small communities that were in this situation. And it is concise, it's short, and it is a great protection. I mean, I swore by that code for twenty years of my career with these smaller communities.
Well, and, you know, Shane, if you can maybe get that to the planning commission to look at. Because that's what we wanted, to adopt something quick, so we have some protection for anybody that thinks.
It's not because this is already.
No, I know, and then we have.
It's already under application.
I know, but I was gonna say, unless this doesn't go through, right? Unless it doesn't go through.
He's under application, he has a year, and if he doesn't get it to final within that time period, right?
If he makes a change like he did the last time.
For the application, he's been over, over a year, but the issue is, is that in, in March, he then took till August to provide the revised set of drawings.
And that was a complete change.
Okay, so is he out of the time period then? And we could just say, you're past your one-year time period, so start over? Or then we should, uh, comply with current code?
No, I mean, I'm asking, what are, what are?
Well, it's, it's actually a hundred and eighty days, that you have to act on it one way or another. But when you take out the periods of time, because there was a period of time in between when he first brought it in in September, and we had discussions, and then, and then there was a period of a month and a half to two months, there again, that was sitting in his court before it came back to the city. We had, we had a discussion over a month and a half period with the planning commission approving that original layout and then bringing it to you with those exceptions.
Yeah.
And so, we had that period of time, and then it's, as I say, all the way till August fifteenth.
Yeah, but if this, if this is an option, right, we should be made aware of this option.
So the, so the, the option is, is to take action and say no.
Right.
Is, is, and, and then he's starting all over with it.
Which we need to have him to do. Well, so have you had anyone in the city who actually wants this? That was my only question. The developer? Well, besides him, have you had anyone okay with it?
I have something that I.
But, but all these decisions is based on.
Yeah.
Your parking is. Your ingress, egress is not adequate. You need to protect the residential area from unlimited access and control the parking. Make the residential parking on the road far away from the business, that they have to walk a block or that will.
Yeah, I, yeah, I agree, I agree with that.
So use actual technical things, you know, to support you, don't say, we just don't want it, that just.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I was trying to say, I feel like if I have.
But what I'm saying is, we need to get, if, you can get that code from the University of Utah to planning commission. Cause if we can adopt at least a simple code, so that the next time somebody comes in or presents, like, we have some code in place to apply, cause that's the issue, right? I mean, the current, the current code allows all of this stuff.
Yeah, the, the, the tough part with this is, is we have a spot in the code that tells us that we're supposed to spread the accesses out. To have rightful accesses.
And we're supposed to have residential over the top.
And it, and it encourages residential over the top of the.
Business.
All this in our concise, one-page document. Unfortunately, we're reading it, we sewed.
Wait, we didn't sew any of that, we didn't sew that.
Someone else sewed.
Someone else sewed it, we're even.
It would be so bad if your boundary line was behind the street line, one light blocked that bad.
Exactly. Then we got hit with that too.
Problem is, the same person owned the land around there, and, and I don't know what was originally zoned, but what I know is, is he, he's the one who built the houses his kids lived in.
I'm pretty sure he did that to create a buffer so that he would get approval. Cause I had approved that, I lived right behind him. So, when he came in, wanted all that.
Cause, yeah, now you're out.
No, I'm not, I haven't sold my house, if that goes in, I'll never sell my house.
Exactly.
And since you asked me not to, it's very better.
I know, you're up my price, anything.
Price, ten thousand.
No, we've been watching that, we're like, oh, if I get approved, my house is never, what am I gonna do?
He, he is sharp.
Okay, so you're, you're the one right on the corner of this, of the brown church, right?
Uh, right across the street from your brown church. Yeah, there's NIMBY law on the corner, and then there's a.
Okay.